For our Board of Education pre-work session, our board meeting cadence allows members to prepare for upcoming regular meetings through these pre-work sessions. They're typically more casual, they're for information gathering, and no formal votes will be taken. We'll begin our session with a review of our Board and Superintendent Communication norms. yearly review and approve our norms. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes. Board norms have been updated to reflect the presence of the student board representative. These changes are reflected on pages three and also page five. So you have them in front of you. Any discussion, page three in the green and page five.
On page three, we've added when communicating with the student, CC, the Chief of Staff.
Yes. And for a board member relationship with employees, when the student board of education representatives and/or apprentices is traveling off ground, for example, board meetings, retreats, GSBA trainings and the such, and locus veritatis is applicable and also field trip procedures And then moving forward or further down, for board meeting preparation and protocols, on page five, a student board of education representative will be seated with other members of the board and act in accordance with Regulation BAV, Regulation one. And number one, the student representative shall be allowed to provide input to be taken under advisement of the Board of Ed. The student should be given adequate time and information in order to be prepared to engage in discussion. The Board of Education members shall refrain from asking the student representative or representative to comment on the student's personal experience related to district operations, and students should not be asked to comment on staff or teacher perception of district operation.
Go ahead.
Yeah. D three, so I understand that we are suggesting we should not ask the student representative to comment on their personal experience related to operations so as to avoid putting a representative on the spot or in the moment, right? But it is also the case that we routinely ask each other about our personal experience with operations and that one of the main reasons that we're all sitting in this role is that we had different personal experiences that brought us to this point. So I would encourage us to think of a way to phrase this where we can still benefit from, I mean, the whole link of having a student representative here is to be able to reflect experience with the operations. How can we phrase this so that we get at what we mean, which is we don't want to put people on the spot, we want to ensure to the point before that they have adequate time to prepare, that we're not making any kind of a situation uncomfortable or demanding, but that we are still able to gain benefit and insight from those personal experiences.
To me, the key part there is asking. And yes, we all have our personal, you know, the one that immediately comes to mind is Jana was involved in some special ed in the classroom stuff. That's an awful way of saying it. Jana as an instructor was involved, but I have never once and never would say, so as a special ed instructor, tell me your thoughts here. But the number of times I've heard her provide that insight, too many to count. What I want to avoid, and I think that this is for the protection of the student, is, Hans, I don't want you to turn to your right and say like, hey, what are your thoughts here? Well, if she's comfortable sharing them, she should.
I didn't say I understand, but I mean...
Because we don't typically, we don't...
I disagree. I think we all the time, I mean, we look to Tracy a lot when, or I'm sorry, Ms. Anderson, a lot when we're talking about current teacher protocols. I do know that, I mean, we, you guys have asked me questions about budgets. We have talked to Dr. Hilton about, you know, things related to medicine. I mean, I just, I feel like we, we do bring personal experiences that greatly enrich this conversation and we do, I mean, so I don't want to get too wrapped up into the etymology of the word asking, but if what we mean is to not put an individual on the spot and ensure that the individual of any of us, not just the student representative in this case, but that any of us feel empowered to say, I don't have input for that, 100% I'm right there for it, but to say that we can't ask seems to be depriving us of an incredibly valuable point of view that, that can only benefit the entire system as a whole.
That you have the right to demand.
I didn't say demand. Ask is not demand. I do know that etymology, it's not the same thing.
But because I think that when I, I have called and asked you questions about the budget.
Sure.
I've asked Dr. Hilton during the pandemic, I don't know if she was a board member yet, but maybe, you know, questions about that, things that were going on there that are related to, you know, the health and well-being of our district. But I feel like it will almost be as if we're asking the student, it will be her perspective, but I think there's the risk of it being perceived as a perception of all students. And I think that, I think that when we've had these conversations, I don't know that they have been up here and someone has been put on the spot and asked to speak on behalf. Like, you know, I have offered stories and reflections about my experiences, but it's not because you all have asked me that.
Well, I mean, we're, we're all here elected representing to some extent. Like, it was our experiences and our ability to communicate those experiences to the community that got us elected to this body to begin with, and it's not any different, I think, in the student representative states. And so, I, so if what you mean, if you are reading the word asking as synonymous with demanding, then I'm with you, like, strike that. But if soliciting that input and looking for that input and deferring to the student representative to provide a perspective of what students might think, I think that's the whole point of having that representative on the spot.
Yeah, if I could also ask a question here, so it does say board meeting preparation and protocol, so there are two things here, and so I want to make sure I understand what I'm being asked to agree to because I am thinking both of them, we're sitting up here, but conversations that any of us have had individually. And so the way I'm reading this, for example, is, you know, we've already established, no, no one should be put on the spot, but then, you know, Paige, you're a student and you're dealing with beyond your patch, right? You know, I heard a lot of parents ask about an open house, so I mean, are we actually saying that none of us should be asking any questions of, because anything to these school operations is taking place, right, in the classroom?
I think it's going to put a necessary burden on Sophie. I think we could ask her a gazillion questions about everything on this agenda, and I think it will be a burden on her, and I don't know that even her experience with the pouch, she may not be a student who was on her phone never in the classroom anyway.
But isn't that addressed in number two?
I think to, I think to, yeah, originally what, I think maybe it was Jana, that maybe the way this was ordered to protect her from, or to protect all of us from her having to give opinions that are the voice of all of Decatur High School, or not just Decatur High School, the entire district of schools, although Decatur High School voted for her. She is the figure for the district, so, but she's also sitting right there, so maybe we could ask her what she thinks.
Yeah, so I was literally going to ask, may we ask, the student representative? I mean...
Well, okay.
Now, what did you remember, Spidey? If you want to enact number two right now, you should have the time to think about it. I think that is...
We're focusing on D three, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, well, is it, maybe I'm reading this wrong, but I feel like maybe this is the whole point of my goal, to use my personal experiences as students related to district operations? I guess that's kind of what I, like, yes, I mean...
I think you're totally right, and I think that there's a difference between what I'm hearing Hans saying, what I think the purpose of is. Your whole point, like all of our point, is to provide your personal experience and background related to school operations as part of the conversation where appropriate. I think where it becomes difficult for a student, whether it's you or it's 15 years from now, is, I'm just going to come to the, we're discussing bus policies, and future us, who's now seven years old, turns to you and says, hey, you ride the bus, what's your experience on it?
This is 40 years in the future.
Yeah, correct. If you feel comfortable sharing that, as an elected official, you ought to share that.
That's right.
It creates a lot of weird gray area for you, a person who has to respond to teachers, respond to principals, respond to bus drivers, respond to coaches. If we get to track and field and one member of this board turns to you and is like, do you like the coach? I wouldn't want to answer that question. If you had an opinion on the coach, I would expect for you to speak up and provide it and share it on the rooftop, but I don't want you to be demanded or asked or anything else, just like I would never say, Jana, as a black woman, how do you feel? But guess what I know is about to come out of her mouth? As a black woman, this is how I feel, because she wears it on her sleeves and brings it to the conversation. As a student, I expect you to wear that on your sleeve. As a student, this is how I feel, but if we're not putting you on the spot, you don't ever have to do that and be in that position legally, morally, in terms of interacting with stuff. And I apologize for using personal example and ironically one, but one I'm comfortable using. As a proud Black woman.
I feel like when it comes to being on the spot, the main issue is that, you know, not just me, but anyone might feel the need to create, if we get on the spot, you know, like if you don't already have an opinion, it's like, oh wait, I need to think of what I believe, and if you don't have time to think about that, and, you know, you're kind of just thinking because you're being spoken to rather than thinking about it. So, yeah, if I didn't have a prior opinion on it, like, you know, what do I say? Or have I thought about it?
But, but to Ms. Anderson's point, I think, is the opposite. If we're preparing for an issue and we want your feedback, as a student, you are correct, that is your elected position in the job, and you should find a way to share that opinion with us, but I'm not going to call or text you or email you and CC, the Chief of Staff, on Wednesday night and ask your opinion on something.
So can we rephrase this to say, board members are free to request students' comment on personal experience, but may not demand, expect, insist, or require to ensure that we outline everything that we're saying. It is okay to ask, it is not okay to expect. I think that's exactly what we're saying.
But I think what she just said is, if she hasn't already formed an opinion or something when we ask her, then she's, then she's got to come up with something that she may not feel that strongly about.
But D two addresses that, like, in all cases, if we're asking for something and the student has not been given adequate time, and frankly, I think that should apply to all of us, not just the student, but, I mean, D two is saying that if they have not been given adequate time to be prepared, then it's off limits, right? And so we're making the presumption that there is preparation that has gone into this and that we're ready to have a conversation about it.
My concern is putting her on, anybody on the spot in the public meeting.
So then let me ask, why are we singling out the student representative in this norm and not all of us? I'm going to be hypersensitive to us creating a set of norms that others, the student representative, and I want to make sure that if we're being thoughtful about this and we're saying, you know, we really shouldn't put any of us on the spot, we should ensure that all of us have time to prepare, and that we may request perspective from all of us, but we may not insist, demand, or require a response from all of us, then let's just call it that, let's not, let's not single it out.
My only, my thoughts, my thought off the top of my head, is it seems a little bit of a different dynamic between an adult and a student. So if we, if I went to James and I was like, I want him to know your opinion on, you know, this part of the budget or, you know, your interaction with this, it doesn't, it's a different interaction because I'm an adult and he's an adult, you know, I can push and I can push and he can, he wants to tell me to get lost if he wants to. It might be a different dynamic between me and Sophie if I'm like, hey, I want to know your thoughts on this new cell phone policy. She may feel obligated to tell me what I want to hear, or she may feel obligated to give me an answer if she doesn't have one, or there may be a different interaction because I'm a board member, I'm an adult, I'm a parent, I'm my age, I'm 25, and she's, you know, however old she is, and, you know, there may be a different interaction just by nature of my role as hers. So that, that was some of what I was reading here, hence some of the other language where when we email her, we need to make sure that her direct supervisor, who is Amanda, is copy, and some of that's for our protection and hers. So maybe you give her time to prepare, give her time to say, hey, I don't really know, or I don't really have an opinion on this, I don't really have an opinion about the lunch policy at Wyandotte Park, you know, maybe you guys handle that. It is what it is, and we need to back off from there, because I think there's a little different interaction between five adults and then an adult and a young adult.
I agree.
I can be behind that, that's different than saying we can't solicit perspective, though. Like, so what we're saying is, how do we solicit a perspective in a way that's respectful of that? I am 100% with it. I'm not sure I'm 100% with just taking it off the table then.
Well, can we follow the protocol for the email communication that if there's a question, that we send it to her and copy the Chief of Staff in that, in that communication where we're asking a question? But that's how we will ask questions, is through email, copying the Chief of Staff?
Yeah, I like that. I think what I want to know is what we have in writing and what I'm expected to do. So the way I read it was, yeah, I can email the Chief of Staff and Sophie to say, hey, you know, if you're comfortable or if you have an opinion on this, whatever. When we're up here, I don't think anyone's ever done that, like, then the expectation is not, okay, whatever we're talking about, now it's your turn. I mean, James, there have been times when you've been like, hey, Tracy, will you please explain? So is that, I guess, I think what I'm hearing you say, so Hans, is I want to know, like, what we do, because the way it's written, it seems to suggest we can't ask, and yet the second one does say there is time, so do we need to revise number three?
That's what I'm suggesting. I'm not sure the Board's aligned on that, but my suggestion is that we amend three to try to capture some of this nuance.
Or do we just...
May I bring up one other thing as the English teacher in the, because the way it's written, it's personal experience, so that, you know, I think there's, as a teacher, I can talk about my personal experience in the classroom, but as a teacher, I can talk about other teachers, so I'm not trying to be pedantic, but since you were elected to represent the student body, we need to recognize that in here, since right now it is limited just to a personal experience.
How...
I don't know if that matters.
I guess it's difficult, when you talk about your experiences in DeKalb County, which...
I can use that as an example.
But as, you're a teacher, but your experiences in DeKalb County as a teacher are likely different from your experiences here and that a teacher's here in the city of Decatur. And so I think you can only talk from personal experiences, but you can't speak on behalf of all teachers or other teachers because it's different.
But I don't think any of us up here feel like we speak broadly on the behalf of anyone. Like, I come here with my personal experience, I don't feel like I'm an excellent representative of the entirety of DeKalb, you know what I mean?
But she said it shouldn't just be on, it should just be her personal experience, it should be, she said she could speak, you said I can speak other teachers' experience.
You're absolutely right. I think what I was looking at is putting Tracy on the spot to say, tell us what you think about yonder, and I guess where I was going with this, and it wasn't well formulated, is if you are representing the students, and this may be a whole other avenue, then what is the process, well, now I'm confusing myself, but the point is, oh, no, because you're right, James, but I can speak to what other teachers tell me, just like, I guess, somebody could say, this is what students told me.
Maybe the way to rectify this so that we all get to be into a rabbit hole, is that when Sophie is up here with the rest of us, she should feel compelled, if she so wants to, to engage in discussion like the rest of us, if she has a budget question and she wants to, you know, ask the question about anything else, she should, and you should, Sophie, you should ask questions and engage in discussion just like the rest of us. She probably has some of the same questions that we have, to be perfectly honest. But I think maybe if we put, I'm just throwing it out there for the English enthusiasts, if we put the words directly in there, board members shall refrain from directly asking the student representative to comment on student's direct personal experiences, maybe that will loop it back into the first one where if we have a direct ask, if we have a direct thing that we're wanting to get her opinion on outside of what's on the agenda, maybe that needs to go between us, her, and Amanda, so that Amanda can say, okay, you know, I'm supervising this, or hey, I think that's a little, a little break of her heart, and then she can say, you know, no, I don't have an opinion, or no, I don't want to comment on that, and then, you know, we have to go away, or she can say, give me a day to research it and ask, you know, some other leaders at school, and I'll be back and I'd be happy to present it, and in that way, it's all kind of on record, instead of just cornering her on the, at the bus stop.
I, I wonder, and in honoring the way that we phrase this, I'm not going to directly ask just yet of Ms. Delena, but I'm wondering if we aren't solving a problem that doesn't exist and we're beating ourselves up about trying to prevent something from happening in the future that's unlikely to happen, and I would rather us come back and revisit this with experience under our belts and say, hey, this is the situation that occurred, this was what we didn't want to have happen, here's how it went down, and this is exactly how we should phrase it to prevent it from happening in the first place, rather than creating a blanket rule that might preclude other very helpful interactions that we're not able to engage in because we were too worried about something that we only imagined might be a problem.
But I, but I don't know if y'all remember the, the meeting that she was sworn in, we were talking about something related to the school, and Tracy said, Sophie was right here in the audience, and she wanted to ask her, and she said, I wish she was up here, right? And so it almost happened.
No, but that's okay if we want to ask, and it's a good point for us to ask, and it's a thing where the student representative would have a point of view, like, I want us to have the flexibility to ask, not demand.
She's not elected to give Hans the flexibility to ask, she's elected to provide that opinion when she believes it's warranted.
Correct, yeah, sure.
Those are very different things.
100%.
Okay, I think I figured out my distinction, if it matters. So in our board lead-up, right, you know, I've learned, and I love it, how much information we get ahead of time, right, to ask questions, and I believe it's even stated that effectively, you know, I have eyes on something, and then constituents are bringing questions to me, right? And then those are questions I can ask, and so am I wrong to say that the constituents who deal with most are students? And so I think that's where I'm kind of trying to fill this in, so that if we do have a proposed policy or the board is looking at, into something, whatever that something is, then we're going to have a need at times for our representative who is dealing with students to be able to share that.
I think the key piece is the preparation. So all of you as board members know that I talk to you tremendously on a weekly basis, especially as we prepare for a board meeting. A student board representative is exactly that, a student. So yes, I will have official board prep with her, yes, she will have meetings with me, just like I have meetings with all of you, but it's still, she is still a student, and to be fully prepared is what we would want. We don't want to put you on the spot to answer questions. And so what I suggest is that I'm looking at the Chief of Staff and her direct, all recording of everything of what has been said, so what we will do is go ahead and bring this back through our various means of communication throughout the course of the month, and this is really the continuous improvement of innovation, which is a student member of the board. So no, we're not going to get it all right the first time, but I hear the heart behind why this is necessary, and it's necessary so that regardless of if it's Sophie, or if it's Mia, or, or Baby, whomever in the future, will feel prepared to fill the role. So we will come back, we'll massage it a little bit, and if that is okay with you, sure. Can I just want to say one other quick thing, just in terms of, you know, even if we ask her a question, I don't want Tracy maybe to think about this, I don't want her to, like, she needs to go out and poll the student balance, right? Because we have, none of us are doing that when something comes up, you know, there are processes that the system has in place to get parent feedback and, and student feedback. And so I want us to continue to rely on those processes that will give us information with fidelity and not expect the one student representative to be able to come back, you know, with the expectation she's going to be able to give us the information that we have on behalf of all students, or even students at the high school. Of course, because we had our first student advisory council for six through 12, and both Mia and Sophie were present, and they learned exactly how much information they received from me and the feedback they provide on policies and all the other processes. So those systems and structures will remain, this is an added, added benefit for our school board, all right?
Awesome. Thank you for the update, and once again, welcome, Sophie. I heard unanimous agreement that we want you to speak up when you want to speak. All of us said that loudly. D two, Mia, you're welcome as well. We'll move on to our book study, The Governance Core, School Board Superintendents and School Working Together, this month's chapter, The Moral Imperative on the Governance Core, facilitated by Dr. Jana Johnson Davis.
All right. So, Chapter one, the title is The Moral Imperative and the Governance Core, and so I was just going to share a few notes that I took down, and then there were a few questions that I shared with you all yesterday, so if I could be prepared for this conversation. But the authors of the book, Campbell and Flannan, believe that not enough attention and research has been given to what contributes to good governance, and they argue that most people in decision-making roles never stop to think about what good governance is. The authors state that governance is not just a passion of policies, it is what boards and superintendents do together and how they do it. There's a heavy emphasis on the cohesion between school system and the board, and the authors argue that the board is the ultimate coherence maker. Campbell and Flannan state that the purpose of the book is boards having an effective governance system in place that will support high-quality instruction programs, a system that will create the stable, sustainable environment necessary for continued growth and improvement. The authors call this governance system the governance core. The governance core is based on the depth of the board's shared moral imperative, which the authors state must drive the work of the board. According to Campbell and Flannan, the moral imperative embodies an emotional and empirical commitment that all children can and will learn. So there are a lot of terms that the authors used that were new to me, and some of them got confusing, it was hard for me to kind of distinguish what they were talking about, and then I found myself going to our strategic plan and our mission and vision statements and trying to see, okay, well, you know, this moral imperative, is this the vision statement, is, you know, so what do these things mean? And there were some that they used interchangeably that were also confusing to me. So I, you know, when I sent the questions yesterday, I asked if you all, you know, could make any connections between our strategic plan, our vision and mission, vision and mission statement, to some of the concepts that were introduced in Chapter one, including moral imperative, moral purpose, governance core, and unity of purpose. Were you all able to make any connections between the things that we... Were you all able to make any connections between the things that we currently have in place and, uh, these concepts that they, that they talk about in chapter one?
I'll start, um, on page eighteen, and it talks about the shared moral imperative, relentless commitment to the learning of all students, no, no exception. To me, that is the definition of all indicator, or all means all. And then, on page nineteen, it speaks specifically to three bullets. All children will achieve, and we will not allow achievement, an achievement gap in our school district. To me, that sounds like student success in all areas. Um, all children will have quality teachers, which sounds like cultivating and retaining high-quality professionals. And then, all children will be in a safe, healthy learning environment, which sounds like building and sustaining an inclusive and en- engaging and inclusive culture. So, the three strategic accelerators, absence of organizational effectiveness and excellence, I thought were the three bullets that were right there.
That's, I put the same thing in my notes. I thought those were our strategic accelerators, yeah, yeah.
So, I, I had to do a pretty long and extensive reset on my expectations for this book. Um, it's not research, it's really sort of a extended op-ed in my, from my perspective. Um, and that's fine, right? Um, I think that I like the concept of the moral imperative. I don't know that I necessarily draw a distinction between a core moral imperative and some of the other elements that there, I think that they're just different ways of saying the same thing. I question the basic precepts that there isn't research or work done around good quality governance. I think we're, all of the work that we've done to date is a reflection of that. I think everything that GSVA does, by and large, is a huge reflection of that. And so, I'm not sure that I buy their four thesis, that it's, that it's underlooked or underserved. But that doesn't mean that there isn't things in here that are, are worth focusing on. I, I think a lot of what they said in this chapter gave me comfort that we've, by and large, done it and that we're on the right path, not that we have big gaps, but that actually we've largely done this. I think we all very much agree that, and I'm going to reference this later today, actually, we are here with one core focus, and that's quality education for the kids, right? I mean, like, that is really what we are all here for, and I think that we're all very aligned around that. And, and so, um, yeah, this was maybe more affirm of what's already been done rather than identifying gaps that need to be closed.
I, I felt the same way. And, you know, as I was, you know, reading like these three bullet points and reading, you know, the moral imperative, I was like, oh, I think, you know, we've done that in, you know, in our strategic plan and our mission and our vision statement, and so. I just want to have any thoughts?
I would just add to the part on page twenty-two, to what you said about GSVA and understanding the local network or even the state network.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we are plugged into Georgia School Board Association. Even from an advisory standpoint, we're a part of the GEC, or the Advisory Council around legislation. And being at the table and advocating on behalf of students from your elected seat, Chair Herndon attends, uh, GEC meetings with myself and our representative from, um, from state. And so, it's key to know that this is the foundation for a high-performing school board, that we can clearly articulate this is what we are doing to demonstrate that we are a high-performing school board.
I'd like to ask the student representative in her role, personal experience as a district operations- Doing that to Father Dr. Johnson Davis.
I was getting nervous.
But, uh, board member Sophie, I, were there anything that stuck out to you from this chapter?
Um, well, I felt that I found myself kind of getting lost this chapter just because the sentences were kind of like the same, but they kind of rephrase a little bit differently each time. So, I felt as though I wasn't, like, you know when you read a book and you just don't, like, you read it and then you forget that you're reading, and you just don't comprehend anything? That's what I thought was happening to me, but I think it was just because the sentences felt the same over and over and over again. Um, uh, and also, you said, like, the vocabulary was, like, they use different words for the same thing.
Yeah.
And that kind of confused me a little bit also.
Yeah, I had the same feeling.
Yeah. But it was good.
I think to that point, I got lost initially in the word moral. I was like, why do they keep using that word so much? And I think I had to retool with the definition of what they're implying here. They don't mean morals like, you know, your religious beliefs per se, but I think they mean kind of our, um, kind of how the lines of our strategic plan is of course, uh, goals and vision. Um, and so, once I kind of reorganized my mind that's what they meant by moral, then I think kind of what you say about it, a little less lost in the thought of what they were saying. There's some kind of colorful, um, language there, but I was really getting started by the word moral.
Yeah, I was like, maybe the audience might be better if it is a school board that isn't having that shared, uh, understanding of what the district is doing and a clear strategic plan. So, you said in this part, I accept what they're saying because, I mean, there was more appreciation, one, I think you said this, Dr. Weaver, for what our school district can do in terms of state-level, um, policies. And then, two, what the board might do in terms of policies to help meet this. But otherwise, I don't know, I felt a little bit like, oh, this already happened.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Uh, I would also say, um, one of the things that are in our strategic plan, it, it's what the must-haves or the five things to know was that, one, we need to re-center the school district's focus on students. Two, we need to weave equity into the fabric of everything we do. Three, we reimagine what school looks like to meet the needs of all students. Four, we create a space where every student feels included. And then, five, we incorporate feedback from all stakeholders throughout Decatur. That's what we say are our must-haves or agreements on a unity of purpose for us. And one of the standards that the board identified as needing, needing improvement is making sure we're keeping this strategic plan in everything that we do, the student outcomes. That was, that was one of the standards that when we assessed across in January that we wanted to make sure we had in front of us. So, this is an example of how we can say, you know what? We're keeping the strategic plan, we're putting the purpose, we're putting the must-have in front of us on a weekly basis. Or monthly.
Um, I have just a couple of questions. On page twenty-one, um, the authors introduce the concept of leadership from the middle. I was confused about who they were talking about, who they were referring to as those below who are liberated when leadership from the middle is effectively executed. What do you think they're talking about? Because it didn't-
I don't think they know what they're talking about. I didn't mean, I'll just be entirely honest, I, I read through that chapter with a very, very, very heavy eye roll. Um, it's, there's not a lot that's any, so, first of all, we could go through with a red pen and cut about two-thirds of this out. I think that it's what Ms. Delena was, uh, Delena was just pointing out. There's a lot of repeat statements. I think there's a lot of stuff in here that is presented as factual basis when it's really not supported opinion. Um, that entire section was muddled and unclear. Um, it, it, it sounds aspirational without having anywhere near the level of research or details necessary to remotely execute. Um, and so, it's definitely a section of the book where I would say, maybe let's not give it entirely too much credence. Uh, I would like to see better, stronger, and more robust research on those exact points before I would shift the district towards implementing anything.
I think to the question, I thought it was teachers and others who are implementing that stuff. So, the state makes a policy, whether it's that one nebulous social media thing last year that could or couldn't impact YouTube, and then the district has to determine what the state makes a law, whatever, how it's going to implement that. And now, at the classroom level, the teachers, parents, et cetera, are the ones that are liberated when there's more intentional decision-making about how this is going to happen, what this is going to look like. So, I don't know how to answer this, but that's the way I read it, because it's talking about state agencies first.
Yes, that's where I thought they were talking about bodies such as a GSVA, such as a PAGE, such as a GAE. Within education, the legislator or the, the body under the gold dome is leading the work or putting forth what people have to implement, but not necessarily made up of people who actually are doing that. So, the agencies such as GEC, GSVA, PAGE, that are the actual workers and implementers, have to provide influence, and that's what I believe is leadership from the middle. Uh, yes, I sit as the superintendent of the city schools of Decatur, but I'm very much in the middle of, when it comes to true state policy. And that, and so-
So, I mean, just to paraphrase this entire multi-paragraph section here, they're saying, "We should make sure we engage with the state so they don't give us dumb stuff that we can't do." And to me, that feels so completely self-evident as to not necessarily be stated, right? And, yeah, and so, and so, what, what they're basically saying is that part of our role is not just to policy down, but to policy up, okay?
Yeah.
It's up to feel that shocking of the revelation.
Well, it says, like, you look in the middle of the last paragraph, it says, "Instead of being on the receiving end of state policy, you can become better partners with your peers and other agencies regionally and at the state, state level. Um, school boards with solid core governance capacity against that middle mindset are in the best position to play as well, they get, have they get better results globally to, as a global system."
It's the, it's the E-rate conversation. It's the, how, I mean, that, that is what this is. This is saying, as a board, understanding your elected role has a greater level of influence when you take on that level of mindset.
And, and that is an extraordinarily eloquent one-student statement that could have been written instead of what was. Like, I agree.
All right, we're gonna move on to my last question, and, and hopefully everyone will, um, respond. So, on page twenty-three, the authors share guidelines for serving on the board. Um, as you reflect on these guidelines, what are the strategies you need to execute in challenging board discussions? And so, just for those listening in, the guidelines are, um, reserve judgment was one. The second is listen emphatically. Um, number three, stay focused on content, not behavior or style. Number four, always be true to the norms of the board. Number five, do not take differences personally. Stay grounded as a system thinker with a strategic focus. And number six, of all that's failed, after many attempts to combat the views or behaviors of a given trustee, it is important for the board to move forward in fulfilling its governance responsibilities. So, which behaviors are most difficult for you when we get in challenging board discussions?
Appreciate Jana about what you-
Well, I'll start. I'll start, uh, mine was reserve and judgment. Um, you know, to go into a little more detail on what they're saying on that, um, trustees with a governance mindset understand that making assumptions or holding on to preconceived views of, of other trustees, individuals with divergent philosophical and ideological points of view can seriously undermine the ability to communicate. And I will acknowledge that sometimes, um, when there are drastically divergent philosophical views, that can be challenging for me sometimes.
Yeah, I appreciate that, too. And when it happens, I try my hardest to look to facts or the evidence or the information or the description we have, um, to move it back into, okay? Not just why are we here, because, you know, I will say, throwing out the word moral kind of ignored me, or not ignored me, annoyed me after a while, because it almost felt platitudinous, but, um, so then I just bring it back to, okay, what, what is the reason that we're making this decision here? Um, you know, strategic plan and actionable items.
Any other?
Jana can probably answer this one for me, but, uh, I struggle to hold true to the norms of the board. I'm very much of a, of a ask-for-forgiveness, don't-ask-for-permission kind of person. Um, you're not allowed to laugh at that, Jana. It's with a nod and an agreement. But, uh, I think it's, a couple of things help with that. One, I do, I do genuinely respect this board, and I know when there's differences of opinion, I, I, that, it's very, I find it very easy to step back and say, let me, let me rethink my perspective because I trust these other people so well, I, I want to rethink them. Um, it's also helpful, this took a little bit of time to learn, but it's also helpful to recognize that the norms themselves are a living document. And if we are having a friction around a norm, then it's entirely possible to go back and have a conversation revisiting whether we need to amend that norm. Um, and so, yeah, that's one that, that's one that, um, gives, uh, Dr. Johnson-Davis and I a lot of opportunity to have respectful conversations before now. But, yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to talk.
Not necessarily as, as a part of my interaction with the board, but as a board member, number five speaks to me, the taking differences personally. Um, you know, it says, "Stay grounded as a system thinker with strategic focus. Remember, the only behavior person controls is his or her own." You know, with the criticisms of the board, uh, that sort of stuff, like, it is very difficult for me to sometimes say, wait a minute, put my governance hat on, you know, this is what we're doing, this isn't, you know, personal, that sort of stuff. Um, I think that you're, we're all here because, even if we don't like the language, we agree with the moral imperative of, we want the education of these kids in our district to be fantastic. Like, that's what motivates us to spend our time being a board member. And so, for me, it is a struggle when I hear that that's not happening, when I hear that there are things we should be doing. To take it very personal.
And sometimes, sometimes, I mean, members, they make it personal.
With, you're dealing with, and so, that's why I like this one. Of course, they make it personal with their children, you know, it's like, ooh.
But, yeah, I mean, during the pandemic, when I was concerned about, you know, the timing of when we should reopen schools, and I received, Sasha, and I received an email from a, from a community member that said, "How dare you, as black women, sit up there?" And, you know, and so, they made it very personal, and, you know, that, that can be difficult at times, yeah, yeah. Anybody else?
Um, I think mine is probably, um, two and three, you read very similar to me, but I would probably have to say number three. I think for me, communication style is not all about what you say, but how you say things. Um, tone, body language, all those things, I'm, I'm, I'm very distracted by that, um, people. Um, and I think to Jana's point, sometimes not just here, but it's all of my other work roles and in the community. And sometimes I think when working up here, if I feel like a discussion has gotten chaotic or if, um, things have gotten off rails, often times it's not because of the, the actual content of the discussion itself, it's because of how the discussion is going, and I, then it becomes hard for me to get back into it and focus, yeah. Um, so, um, that's challenging.
How much time do I have left after this?
Negative five minutes.
I had to take it out the door, but-
Give it to us.
Well, you know, I don't want to end on a negative note, you know, what started, started my thought pattern about this, but, you know- started my thought pattern about this, but, you know, what's thing you, one thing you appreciate most about this board?
You, Dr. Johnson.
I'll drop you a statement.
For me, it's easy, when people have asked about serving on a board, I think there's an appreciation for democracy that I, I feel like I couldn't have if I weren't serving on the board. Um, I think it's really important that you have multiple people, um, with different views and different backgrounds coming together to share, um, you know, knowledge, information, et cetera, so I really appreciate that.
I think, actually, I think Sophie and Mia asked me the same question, and I had a flare on that same question, and I think everybody has, um, a couple of different and unique strengths. So you have a couple of budgetary experts, you have educational professionals, you have the people in healthcare, um, you have women of color, you have men, you have, um, you know, people who have shared experiences, uh, but also professional strengths, that I think is a uniqueness that you don't see in a lot of school boards. Um, but it's not that one person has one thing, it can be some overlap, uh, so, everybody's not the authority on the one thing, so if, you know, I miss a meeting, you're not like, "I have no idea, but women of color think about this thing," you know, or if Pam does not, you're like, "You don't know what to say about the budget," you know, but you do have, uh, you do have a lot of unique strengths, um, and unique perspectives, but a lot of, um, differences in those.
For me, it's the commitment and the shared moral imperatives, literally, um, all means all is more than just a mantra. And you, as a board, allow me to live that out in my role as the superintendent, and I am extremely appreciative of that.
Thank you.
I wrote down shared vision, and I wrote down when we, when I interact with other board members around the state, and they share anecdotes of the things that they fight over, the things that are distracting to them. I feel genuinely blessed to be indicator on this board, you know, when stuff went down with, uh, a teacher in Georgia let go for bringing stuff into the classroom, some curriculum, and another school board let her go. I remember sitting around at least three of you, and we were joking like, "Well, how do we hire her?" You know, and it's like, we may squabble over little things at the margins, but we're not distracted over who the football coach is as a board, and we all have the best interests of a bunch of students in, in mind, and I think that's really rare.
Thank you.
I was thinking how enjoyable you all make this work that can be very difficult and challenging at times. You know, coming to a board meeting, um, is not something that I dread, um, and I just feel like that. And, um, your willingness to laugh and smile, um, you know, in spite of the difficult decisions that we have to make, and, uh, keeping our children as priorities, we were, we bring the story up, you know, often, but we were once criticized for, for smiling, um, and, you know, we know that there's at least one school system that, that, they may not see very many smiles at their next board meeting, right, um, because of the tragedy they've just experienced, and so, you know, us taking a moment and, um, you know, taking that opportunity while, you know, while we can. Um, so, that's, that's what I appreciate.
I feel, I, I mean, I, I trust y'all, I know that y'all have my back, and I've got yours, and I know that y'all feel the same way about each other, and I feel, um, quite, quite lucky to be serving in a capacity where that is the case. Like, I think that, um, the district had some challenges facing it. I know that a couple of us came onto this board with a really clear intent to move us in a different direction, and I think we've kind of stayed true to that path and managed to bring the full board along, and we're now in, I think, a vastly better place than than we were a number of years ago. So, um, I'm really pleased about that. And, uh, yeah, look forward to, to more.
Um, I think that it's how focused, um, the board is on the students, um, and how, like, the discussion doesn't become about adults, and, you know, if it starts to take that turn, and it's kind of, you know, it's recognized, it kind of stops. Um, before I came onto the board, I didn't even know that, um, you know, the goal was to just talk about students, I didn't know that, you know, um, I didn't know just how focused it was on the students. I kind of, when I thought about the board, I thought about, and it's pretty one, in the community, but, uh, it's how focused on...
That concludes my chapter-one discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson-Davidson. Next month, Board Member Utz, you'll facilitate chapter-two, trustee governance mindset. Uh, Doug Whitaker, introduce the next item for us.
Yes, uh, thank you Chair Herndon, I would like to call on Mrs. Amanda Lynch, our Chief of Staff, to discuss and seek your feedback on four financial policy draft.
Good afternoon, Board Chair Herndon, ladies Chair Spulton, seat members of the board, junior representative Delena, and Superintendent Dr. D. Holwick. Today, we have four policies on our pre-work agenda. In accordance with the annual policy calendar that was shared last month, today's policies are the fiscal management policy. Policies that are presented during pre-work are new business on which we are seeking input. These policies are being presented as initial drafts. They're being shared to gather your input and feedback that can be reflected in drafting or revising future versions. I will share highlights of each policy and invite any discussion or feedback after each one. So the first policy on which we are seeking your feedback is policy D I B, financial reports. As drafted, D I B policy, the presentation of monthly financial statements, including an account of expenditures and revenues for which the CFO is responsible to the superintendent. It specifies that monthly financial statements should show the receipt of funds, source of funds, disbursements, and other information as required by the local and/or state Board of Education. And it indicates that financial reports will be reviewed by the Board of Education and open to review by the public. It also sets the capitalization limit of fixed assets at $25,000. Is there any input or discussion that we should consider for this policy?
Well, I would like us to be pretty explicit about how financial reports to be, right? I mean, just in, in recognition of the fact that detailed financial reporting can be hours of work for the CFO, I would like to be very explicit that we want summary, um, information. Can you talk us through how we arrive at the capitalization limit?
Um, I would defer to Dr. Broom for that one, she helps, um, obviously, in drafting and, and informing all of that, so...
I would say the purchases, like, mainly technology with the purchases of Chrome, uh, average purchase is about $25,000, so we would have to inventory all of the computer space on that threshold.
So, if we are buying them in recurrent purchases, but, so that's $25,000 a year, or $25,000 a purchase?
A purchase, if we're bad on the book.
And, so, so I guess the reason why I'm, I'm indexing on it is because I'm used to seeing something, a thing being identified as a capital purchase, whether or not enough of it was, you know, let's say if we buy ten computers one time instead of a hundred, that ten isn't going to hit the $25,000 limit, but it would still want, we would still want it to be capitalized, right? Textbooks are another great example, where we might be replying, buying replacement textbooks, we would like that probably to be capitalized, but it may, each independent individual purchase may not hit that threshold. Do we want to, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, it depends on the life cycle also, goes the life cycle is a year or more, then it will be capitalized.
Regardless of that.
Regardless of the dollars.
That's, that's all I need, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
To his point, in the actual thing, some more clarification there, I think would go a long way in providing the CFO with some direction and the board with what to expect.
Perfect, we are definitely taking notes, and we'll send you a faded draft to make sure we capture it.
Yeah, nope.
I would also want to make sure that we revisit that specific number on a routine basis, so that forty years from now, they're not wondering why the hell they have $25,000, excuse my French, why they don't, why they still have the $25,000 limit.
Absolutely.
Do you want to? Feel like we're good?
All right, next is policy D J E A, purchasing authorities. Highlights of this policy include it detailing how a centralized purchasing system can help reduce the cost of purchasing. It ensures compliance for purchases with policy rules and regulations. It prohibits the purchase of personal purchases, alcohol and tobacco products. It requires V O E approval for purchases at or above $100,000, and it further restricts dividing purchases in order to come in below this threshold. It allows multi-year agreements that comply with federal and state laws with renewal subject to the school board approval, and it allows for emergency purchases greater than $100,000 if critical to the continued operation of the district with superintendent approval and timely notification of the board. Any discussion or things we can take into future drafts?
One question, I feel like I heard you read something that I don't see up there, and I may have just misheard it. You said prohibit, like, the, I thought I heard something to the effect of, like, you can't have multiple things adding up to $100,000.
So that's, the multiple is, not the prohibit, but it does, um, allow for the purchases that are above $100,000 to have to go to the board, it does restrict dividing those purchases, it's like, I'm gonna spend $50,000 here, and $25,000 here, and $50,000 here, so that it can't be that.
So, um, two questions, one, are there thresholds for approval that hit at the superintendent level as well? Like, a hundred thousand, it comes to the board, fifty thousand, or seventy-five thousand, if that were superintendent, like, and, and below a certain level, like, they're able to be...
Oh, yeah, there, there is.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, we have a threshold, anything over $5,000 requires, and it's a, it's a, it's a whole purchase of a total.
Is, that feels like a very small number to me.
It is small, but that's the number.
Is that something we want to revisit as well? Or, let me put forward that perhaps that is something that we could consider revisiting, I don't want to correct that incorrectly.
I, I will say that over the size of our district, it's one of the reasons why that threshold is as low as it is in comparison to my previous experiences. So, um, knowing how much is being spent in what areas and what I have to sign off on as the superintendent, significantly lower than what I'm accustomed to, but I understand in comparison to the entire proportion of the budget. If it were cumbersome, I would let you know, but I like keeping my eyes on the dollars.
Okay. So then, then, um, in both cases, whatever the thresholds are, I would suggest that we have a routine revisit to ensure that we're maintaining pace with inflation and, and et cetera, et cetera.
Is there any reason that that scale isn't in this policy?
Because it's D J, um, yeah, it's in D J E.
Okay.
It's, uh, this is D G E X, D J E X.
Okay. The D J E A would just be board-specific, the D J E would be broader, okay?
The level of authority that is within the actual school.
Okay.
And we can provide you with that other one, the reference, if it's helpful.
Sorry, may I, one of the, I think you may have put it, have these gone to the web, or no, we're not there yet?
No, publicly, yes, so this is just for discussion and your feedback, what we'll do is we'll redraft it and work it with you guys, and then next month, we'll present a new draft, and then it will be open for public comment.
Do we want to include in the purchases, uh, you know, no, I just answered my own question, sorry. I was going to ask, do we want to prohibit firearms and things of that nature, but actually, no, if we have school resource offices or things of that nature, we will, that will be something that maybe we have to, so, strike that.
Right.
Okay.
Third is policy D J E A C, which is purchasing or credit card use. It's another new policy that helps clarify best practices we are currently implementing. As drafted, highlights of policy D J E A C include, it provides guidance around the use of purchasing in corporate cards in city schools of Decatur. It indicates that users must sign and accept an agreement to follow C S D policies and procedures around this. It prohibits the use of purchasing cards, or using our purchasing cards for cash advances, gift cards, entertainment, and tips. It establishes quarterly reviews of purchases to ensure they are related to work-related duties. It allows for termination of account privileges or other disciplinary action up to and including termination and/or civil criminal penalties when employees fail to comply with a purchasing card program. Any questions or discussion on this?
Never in my entire life not seen a P-card program get abused. So, um, I think I'd want to know a bit more about why we need this. It's, it's just, this is a, this is a routine avenue for people to end up in jail, and so...
And that's why you have to have the policy. So it's one thing to train on it, um, say, for example, gift cards in a local school, everyone wants to be able to say, "Oh, here's a gift card for Amazon," or what have you, you know, a teacher appreciation. You can ask someone else to purchase a PTA, or your business partner, or what have you, but you cannot take your P-card, go to the said store and buy gift cards and provide that to staff. And you need to codify it in policy, not just simply practice.
So, so P-cards exist now?
Um, just, on, and the first line, it says, "Board of Education, Division Head, old slash apartment head, is there that, is there a way to define that a little bit better? This might give you a lot of people, that could be like, all of us, all, everybody in this room, all principals, is that the way that it's being practiced now, or is that the way that you'd want it to be?
It's the person who has access to the P-card, so say, for example, as the principal and the person who is the bookkeeper, they both have access, so you have to, you want to be as clear as possible to any staff member that would have access to said card. Because you don't necessarily, you wouldn't see Dwayne go to Barnes and Nobles to get said book, but you could see a doctor's school go to give the book, but you would see potentially his, so you, and the same thing for, as you see division heads in front of you, but behind the division heads, or the department heads that just kind of just came in the room. And some divisions have larger departments, when you think about the division of operations, you're talking about all of transportation, all of nutrition, those are large, all of facilities and maintenance, all of those departments have budgets that, and they're valid purchase cards, that you want to make sure you're highlighting who must abide by said policy that would be adopted by the school.
All right, now that I'm hearing questions, I have a question. So, the quarterly review of the purchases to ensure they're related to work-related duties, who would do, or what entity would do that review? Somebody the finance department?
CFO or designated...
In every purchase, probably, at every, and if it's unauthorized, we will execute for the money.
So I'm not sure if this is answerable, like, we were talking earlier about the $5,000, is there a P-card, is there an existing P-card threshold right now for authorization?
It is, it's based on your, uh, level, by chief level, or how you've been structured.
Um, I do have a question, is, is alcohol explicitly, uh, no, alcohol is not explicitly listed, but I'm sure you...
Right, so with the card, we can block certain merchant category codes, so when you purchase alcohol, there's a category code, and social...
It also lived in the previous draft that we just did, where, which is the D J E A, and this is the E A C, where it says it prohibits those purchases as well.
where it says it prohibits those purchases as well.
Want to prohibit to the latest point, do we want to make it explicit here? Because if someone does attempt to make that purchase, that's also disciplinary, I would assume.
We can reference the, the other policy.
Yep, okay. And then do we have explicit, uh, I was trying to think how to ask this. Is it the case that everybody all the way down in an organization has access, depending on their level? Or do we cut it off at a certain level in the organization?
Direct is in above.
Direct is in above, okay. Is that something we want to be explicit about from a policy standpoint?
That's the first one.
The first line. It's not up there. The first line in the thing. I'll read it.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
P-cards to elected members of the board, division heads, or school and department heads.
Wait, I have a P-card?
You have the authority according to this policy to apply for one. It has already been denied.
Okay, I have one, and this may be so minor, just cut me off if it's like seemingly tangential, if something happened with me. And so I inadvertently have an annual renewal. And discovered three years into my credit card payment, is there a system in place with that? So that, you know, we are using, like, your earlier slide talked about a hundred thousand for multi-renewal things. So I see that there's work-related duties.
That, that would be a contract posted for infinite campus. We have infinite campus for multiple years. Uh, we not only change your student information system over and over again, but because that costs, because it costs so much money, every year it will need to come to the board for a renewal of, that's not a P-card, that's a difference. This is about P-cards.
I'd, I'd be happy to strike Board of Education from the list of appropriate P-cards, just to mention.
Yeah, I would too.
Yeah, I know.
Cause I was wondering, did you, you have?
I deny a P-card?
So...
I don't mind the hurdle that if a future chair wanted a P-card, they should visit the policy first and have that conversation publicly?
So the P-card in city schools of the decater also counts as your travel card.
Right.
So in some districts, your travel card is separate. And so you would, you all travel. Basically, you all travel on.
On your card.
On my P-card.
Right.
But when you go to a hotel, you should be able, you would be able to check in with your P-card in your name. That's how things have had to be adjusted even here in the past around that. So the ability for you to have your own purchase card, because purchase is inclusive of travel here and it's not separate, that is why. Because if you were going somewhere and I were not going, you should be able to...
Can't we just get reimbursed?
Really?
Not the point.
I just, I think.
Uh, we can strike it.
I, I, I'm in agreement with Board Chair Herndon that I think requiring board members to go through a process.
And functionally, we're, we don't, we don't even use it or even know.
Yeah. Like, I found out about it a few years.
Okay.
One more. This one should be easy. We have policy DC Annual Operating Budget. This is an existing policy that the board adopted last school year, but there is one proposed revision that includes adding language to define a balanced budget. This change is being proposed because the Association of School Business Officials, ASO, recommends including this definition of a balanced budget in district policy.
Great. That's one highlighted in green, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
All right. That is all. We will take your feedback and work on the new draft that we will share next week. Thank you.
Lynch, look forward to the conversation next month and our work session on these policies. Next item?
Uh, Chair Herndon, I'd like to call on Dr. Lilneah Broom, our Chief Financial Officer, to seek your feedback on a proposed FY26 budget calendar.
Good evening, Board Chair Herndon, Vice Chair Dr. Solson, esteemed members of the board, Student Representative, Superintendent Dr. Whitaker. Although it seems like only yesterday we were revised budget, time has come for us to begin the preparation and timeline for fiscal, for fiscal year 2026 budget. The Finance Department operates based on the district's four strategic accelerators with a specific focus on accelerator four, where utilization effectiveness and effort by ensuring financial transparency and effectiveness. The fiscal year 2026 draft budget calendar, as always, starts with community input on their budget priorities and our feedback on the current budget. There's a link on the Finance Department section of the website where we contend to exceed improvement and community input and feedback on the budget. Currently, the link is set up for fiscal year 2025 budget. However, as we begin the budget process for fiscal year 26, a link will be set up on the district's main page for the community to provide feedback. I respond to each comment submitted and frequently have follow-up calls or meetings with community members. The board will receive a summary of all budget feedback from stakeholders on a monthly basis. Today, the budget timeline draft is presented to see if the current proposed calendar needs to be modified in any area. The budget calendar will be presented at the October 8th board meeting for adoption. Additionally, the school allotment guidelines will also be presented at the October 8th board meeting. At November's work session, the board and superintendent will discuss the budget parameters and priorities. These discussions will outline for development of fiscal year 26 budget. At November's board meeting, I will present the fiscal year 24 budget review, which will include the unodded fiscal year 24 actual expenditures and revenue and the unodded fiscal year 24 end of fund balance, which will be, which will be the beginning fund balance for fiscal year 25 and will provide us with a more accurate projection of fiscal year 26 beginning fund balance. Also in November, the allotment guidelines, food projections, and salary and benefit comparisons to surrounding districts will be, will be presented at the board retreat. In December, fiscal year 25 mid-year budget amendments, school allotment guide, budget parameters, and priorities will be presented to the board for approval. The annual internal auditor will present the fiscal year 24 financial audit and January report. The tax commissioner and city manager will present to the board in February. I will also present the five-year financial review and the first fiscal year 26 preliminary budget draft review in this session. Based on feedback from the first fiscal year 26 preliminary budget draft and guidance from the superintendent, I will revise the budget and submit the second fiscal year 26 budget draft to the board in March. A presentation on the use of state grants will also be presented to the board in March. New this year is the budget community meeting that will allow the community to verbally provide feedback on the budget, ask questions, and receive answers. The first budget community meeting is scheduled for March 25th. The following month in April, the board will tentatively approve the fiscal year 26 budget. A Board of Education Community Meeting is scheduled for April 23rd. And this will be a second opportunity for the board to hear from the community prior to the final approval of the budget. As required by the state, there will be two public budget hearings in May to allow the public to comment on the budget. After the public budget hearing, the board will vote on the final fiscal year 26 budget and the tentative approval of the military rate on May 13th. In June, there will be three public military hearings, and the board will vote on the final tax military rate. The dates for the military hearings are contingent upon receipt of tax digest information. I will be happy to respond to any questions or provide clarification.
Anyone have any questions about the calendar?
I have a calendar, but have we started to advertise public feedback about the budget? It's, um, like, my, yeah, my call flash, social media comments.
As far as the fiscal year 25 budget, the fiscal year 25 link for budget feedback stays on the website.
Okay.
So once we start this process, we will update it with fiscal year 26 and it will be on the page.
Can I request that we also publicize the date at which the budget book will be released? Just so that that's also kind of in the public sphere?
Absolutely.
All right.
Excellent.
We, I don't know, I'm sorry, looking at that calendar, is there an ETA as to when the public input would be? So we've got an FY26 draft budget calendar, which effectively tells me really starting the budget process now. Right? So do we know when to expect?
So, October 8th was the budget timeline adoption, so I would assume that
Okay.
at the October 8th meeting and we approved the timeline. It would probably go public with the timeline.
Yeah. That would be October 8th. And then also by that time, it is our goal that the new website that is in process will be ready as well. So that's the, the part of putting a lot of new things out on the website while we're re-imaging the website and moving to a new website. We don't want things to get lost, so.
Thank you, Dr. Broom. Look forward to your recommendation for the calendar next month. Thank you, board members, for the discussion. This concludes our pre-work session. Oh, one more. I'm sorry.
Um, I just had a question about the link for feedback. Is that just on the, um, the website? Or is that sent on an email or?
It's, it's on, it's on the website. Um, oftentimes in scoops, whether it be on a staff scoop or a superintendent scoop, when we provide this information, it will go there. And then also the link is oftentimes in the bulletin that is at the conclusion of this board meeting. On Friday, there is a bulletin that really summarizes everything that happened in the board meeting, and that link is in there as well. Because as you can see, every month, we do something about the, with the budget pertaining to the budget starting next month.
So is the bulletin on the website?
No, the bulletin is another email. So there is, there is three types of emails that are sent. One is an email called staff scoop, which is sent to all staff. Then there is the superintendent scoop that is sent to all families and community. And then there is also the board bulletin, which is sent to all community and all families. So there are three times per month, this information is being sent via email as well as it being available on the website.
Any chance we could send it to students as well?
I can send it to the student advisory. I would not necessarily advise sending that as a email directly from me because I don't email students directly.
Okay. I'm just thinking if there's a mechanism to also solicit students.
Remember, the students know what variance is. So they, and then we're talking about second graders. So they are part of this process through the student advisory council. I would not send this email to all students in the city schools of decater.
Got it.
Good question. All right. Hearing no further. That'll conclude our pre-work session. It's like five minutes. We'll start at 3:41 with our work session. Hey, I want to thank everyone for joining us today for our monthly work session. Dr. Whitaker, if we could start with the first presentation?
Thank you, Chair Herndon. I would like to call on Ms. Delana Lynch, our Chief Staff, to update our progress on constituent services, Resolve CSD.
Good afternoon again. Board Chair Herndon, Vice Chair Solson, esteemed members of the board, Student Representative Delaina, and Superintendent Dr. Jima Whitaker. Last month during the pre-work session and again today, the board discussed the VOE and superintendent communication norm. The establishment of a constituent services process was added as a way for stakeholders to submit unresolved concerns or issues directly to staff. Today, I will be providing you with an update on the plan to launch Resolve CSD, our constituent services process. The development of Resolve CSD aligns directly with our strategic accelerator of building and sustaining an engaging and inclusive culture. Resolve CSD promotes a positive culture and climate that values our families and community as partners. It provides a streamlined approach for all stakeholders to feel heard and be connected to the proper process when support is needed. So, why Resolve CSD? We have five strategic goals for this new project. The first is to ensure CSD community stakeholders feel seen and heard. Resolve CSD provides stakeholders with unresolved issues, a mechanism by which to share their concern, and a tool by which to identify support, track follow-up, and reach resolution. Two, streamlined approach for addressing CSD issues and concerns. Currently, concerns are received through phone calls, emails, escalation through staff, or a variety of other channels. This can result in multiple touchpoints with various staff or our stakeholders. Resolve CSD provides a more tailored approach for responding to stakeholder concern. From here, issues can be triaged and assigned to appropriate staff for follow-up to improve the stakeholder experience. Importantly, this does not mean that we will stop answering phone calls or emails or other forms of communication. Three, enhance CSD culture of community connection and transparency. Our mission statement clearly articulates the value we have in partnering with our community. And this administration is committed to continuing to increase transparency across all aspects of the organization. Four, enhance CSD responsiveness to issues and concerns. Resolve CSD will allow us to better track when issues are received, who resolves them, how long it takes for them to be resolved, and the actual resolution with increased accountability. And then five, continuously improve CSD with input from community stakeholders. Resolve CSD will allow us to collect important data that will help us drive continuous improvement. By categorizing the types of issues and concerns we receive, we can identify trends and patterns and develop strategies to address these. As we navigate stakeholder pain points and concerns in this manner, we believe ultimately CSD will benefit from continuous progress and become a stronger school system. Work on Resolve CSD is already underway. In July, we completed a landscape scan. We looked at our existing systems and practices to understand our current approach to collecting and resolving issues. This helps us better understand our needs. We also looked at other school systems with constituent services departments in order to better understand how these departments function in the educational realm. In August, we focused on design and development. During this phase, we created the intake form and process flows. We are leveraging Smartsheet, a project management tool that allows receipt and documentation of issues, the creation of workflows, and the ability to set and manage alerts. This month, September, we are preparing for our soft launch window. We are training our staff teams and testing the functionality of the form. Through this, we are identifying and troubleshooting any functionality and process issues. In fact, Resolve CSD will be live and available to our stakeholders next week, September 16th, via our website. In October, we will be in our evaluation and redesign phase. With this phase, we will intentionally engage stakeholders as we seek to test our workflows and further refine our processes from the September 16th soft launch window. Next, later this fall, we will go live and announce full implementation of Resolve CSD. During this phase, we will execute our process, manage any risks, and begin to collect data that will be used to report impact. This phase will also include a comprehensive communication plan to build awareness around the tool. Finally, as with any new project, we recognize that there will be opportunities for continuous improvement. This will include ongoing efforts to evaluate the execution of the process and tools, address any challenges, and celebrate our successes. As part of our landscape analysis, we identified separate processes that already exist and will continue to exist. Processes such as Title IX, Title VI, and open records requests are federal requirements that are vitally important and must continue to live separately from Resolve CSD. We also have other processes in place, such as employee investigations or, as we just heard, budget feedback. We recognize a need to honor these existing processes. However, we also recognize stakeholders may not always be able to differentiate between these many different processes. Therefore, constituent services will serve as the one-stop place to connect stakeholders to the correct department, person, or process to help answer questions or resolve concerns. Behind the scenes, we have been building our website for public release on September 16th. While not currently live, I'd love to take you, with a little help from Efton, to a preview of the website. to a preview of the website for a program that will enhance the customer's experience. So what you see here is Efton has taken us to the landing page for constituent services. It gives a brief description of constituent issues and concerns and how it works. The first thing underneath there talks about the issues and concerns. So he's going to click that for me, and you will see what we just saw in screenshot. So here, it lists some of the common different forms, issues, processes that already exist. So if you're not sure, he's going to click on that. By the way, it pops up with a description and what you need to do if you want to submit an open records request. In this case, an email or physical mail directs you how to do that. For bias and equity, if we click on the bias and equity incident, it describes under what conditions you would submit if you had a concern about an equity concern. And again, it will take you directly to the form that already exists that needs to, that could be filled out by the stakeholder. It even has VOE feedback. This is already on our website. It talks about how to email the board and how the board responds through email. And so once again, it's just collected all of this information into one place where the different processes can be clicked on to learn more and direct constituents to the correct spot. Down at the bottom, you'll see unresolved issues. This icon on this page is what's really harnessing for the Resolve CSD process. So when we have unresolved issues, where we will drive people, there's a separate page for that on here as well that will take you to the form, both on the left-hand side and here so that we're really trying to direct people exactly where they need to be or to get the information to where they need to be. So I'm now going to ask Efton to navigate back to the presentation to tell you a little bit more about what will happen with that Resolve CSD button. So Resolve CSD helps stakeholders who have an unresolved issue or concern that is not addressed by one of those existing processes we just looked at. I do want to first emphasize that the City Schools of Decatur believes that issues or concerns are generally best addressed nearest to the point of origin as possible. While Resolve CSD will be a process that lives in the office of the superintendent, the chain of command will still be honored. Concern should first be brought to the school or department leader as most issues can be resolved at the local school or department level. Resolve CSD will be in place to address issues or concerns that have risen beyond the school or department. It is designed to help address the fundamental issues. For example, let's imagine a parent has a concern about the rigor of the curriculum being taught in their student's classroom. This parent should first speak with their child's teacher. If the teacher is unable to address the parent's concerns, the parent is encouraged to talk to the school principal. If the issue remains unresolved, stakeholders could leverage the Resolve CSD process. Stakeholders would be driven to our intake form. This form will ask for the stakeholders' contact information and any details related to the issue. Once submitted, we would get that, we would triage it, and stakeholders can expect an initial response within forty-eight business hours. If a follow-up response is required, we aim to produce, provide this within seventy-two business hours after that initial response. Note that stakeholders, again, absolutely can still call, email, or meet with appropriate staff. The constituent services webpage will be easily accessible from the main CSD homepage. Once again, we invite stakeholders to begin accessing this as early as September sixteenth as part of our soft launch, and we will invite their feedback as we test our functionality and refine our processes. We are excited for the launch of Resolve CSD, and it is our hope that the constituent services process will help better serve our community and support our strategic accelerator to build and sustain an engaging and inclusive culture. Are there any questions or feedback the board would like for us to consider?
I like this. May I have two questions?
I think I understand, I just want to confirm. On slide five, that bottom logo, unresolved issues, if someone were to click on it, that's when then slide six, Resolve CSD? Exactly. Okay. The only one that confuses me is employee investigation. So I understand if a constituent says, hey, I want to do an open records request, or, you know, I want to give you feedback about the budget, or I want to give the board. What?
Clearly, it's like someone saying, I want to find out if he investigated. So what is this?
That is, if someone is, believes an employee might have violated a policy or something like that, and they need, you know, there was a...
Any type of allegation.
Any type of allegation against an employee is what that goes to.
And if I'm correct, if they clicked on, if Efton were to click on it on the website, it would give me a bar?
It would, it would describe exactly what that is and tell you what you need to do. In this case, it would be an email.
I was wondering, during the soft launch, who are the stakeholders that you will engage and how will you engage them?
Yeah, great question. So a couple of different things. The one is we're... ...of course, with made up or similar or whatever issues. In addition, as we're doing the soft... ...push will come as a go-live, but it will be available. So we're, might encourage people who call to enter and then seek their feedback about how it felt like to, you know, would you mind entering this in the form? We'd love to get your feedback. And because it'll be live, or maybe someone's tuning in today and they will want to access it. So as we're getting things through, we have ways to both prompt it and to be responsive to those to come in to seek their feedback about the experience.
My experience with constituent services is that you are going to get a flood. So meanwhile, like employee investigations and, you know, Title IX complaint, things like that are all very important. I would expect the vast majority of things you're going to get, at least at first, is can't figure out how to find my kid's grades, right? And so the how do I do this thing is going to be, I think, a big part of it. And the language here felt a little bit like it pushes parents towards larger issues as opposed to, I really just want my kid to sign up for band. There's something, you know what I mean? Like, so I guess how would we handle that?
So we've tried to account for some of that on the form itself. So the intake form actually prompts parents to say, is this an unresolved issue? Have you already talked to your child's principal or the department head? And if they click no, it actually comes up and it's like, you, you know, consider talking to your child's principal first. And it says that language in the form, and it's, the form itself has some response as well. Obviously, with a soft launch, we'll see kind of, you know, what we're getting and things like that, and we will respond to people, and we will have to do some capacity building around using it. We've tried to be proactive with some of the language. Do we know that we'll get some things like that? Sure, will we work to redirect them? Yes.
I would also add that we use a lot of the data from being here for a year. When I say we, myself, and the board mayor of the office of the superintendent and the board, i.e. the person that gets almost every call, it's not necessarily questions around how do I sign up for band. They have true unresolved issues and concerns, and that's typically what they're calling. I would say that number four, or even emailing this body for, or even if they know that there is a chief of staff calling the chief of staff for. So we really took a look at what we have heard over the year into account when looking at the design, which hopefully will be helpful, and we will see.
The one thing that I would prefer is that when it's a call or an email, people are going to self-select out. That's, I mean, recognizing that you're calling the superintendent. I'm probably not going to call the superintendent to ask how to sign my kid up for the band. But if you have a click on a website where it can be like, I've got a problem, I want to quickly get this resolved, it grammatically...
Yes, that, that's why we're doing the soft.
That's why we're doing the soft launch, yes, exactly.
Team management and project management excellence.
Yep.
Thank you. So Chair Herndon, I'm excited about the soft launch, launch of Resolve CSD, and its clear expectation of timely response from us. As a reminder, constituent services or Resolve CSD is not a person, but a process. So we wanted to ensure all of our CSD community stakeholders feel seen and heard.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. Uh, next presentation.
Yes, I would like to bring up Mrs. Frances Holt, the Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services, to provide an overview of our social-emotional learning plan.
Good afternoon, Board Chair Herndon, Vice Chair Holton, esteemed members of the board, Student Representative Delena and Superintendent Dr. Dima Whitaker. Although there are connections... Efton, are you turning this or am I turning this? Although there are connections to multiple strategic plan accelerators, the main connection for this presentation is to accelerator building and sustaining an engaging and inclusive culture. And you will hear more about that as I progress. However, I don't want to miss the opportunity to mention that research tells us that social-emotional learning skills are teachable and have a direct impact on student success in all areas. SEL is also connected to how we cultivate and retain quality professionals as research shows that teachers who are trained and supported in implementing SEL report greater efficacy for managing student behavior, higher levels of personal accomplishment, lower job-related anxiety and depression, higher quality of classroom interaction with students, greater teacher engagement, and greater perceived job commitment. As we move forward, please remember that there is an addendum provided and keep that handy if you may be able to find additional information to answer some of your questions. According to the Collaborative for Academic Social and Emotional Learning Council, social-emotional learning is regarded as an integral part of education and human development. SEL is the process through which all people acquire and apply knowledge, give a healthy identity, manage emotions, and achieve goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain supportive relationships, and make responsible caring decisions. SEL advances educational equity and excellence through authentic, cool, family, community partnerships to establish learning environments and experiences that feature trusting and collaborative relationships, rigorous and meaningful curriculum and instruction, and ongoing evaluation. It is most beneficial to integrate SEL through the school's academic curriculum and culture across the broader context of the school-wide practices and policies and going, and through ongoing collaboration with families and community organizations. The Castle Wheel gives us a high-level overview, and it is the framework that CSD will use as its guiding light. SEL and CSD have a rich history. Although changes in personnel, the pandemic, and reorganizations have impacted systematic implementation efforts. Up until 2017, SEL was fragmented across the district with different schools using different approaches. Some schools used specific curriculum materials and programs while trying to follow the character development component of IB and EO frameworks. Starting in 2016, the addition of the Equity and Student Services Department and more comprehensive and focused approach was initiated. The momentum was great and moving towards systematic district implementation until the pandemic hit in the spring of 2020. At that time, the district implemented Wellness Wednesday to help K-12 students and staff deal with the challenges of the pandemic. Activities and professional development learned on, focused on self-regulation, trauma-informed practices, and stress management. After in-person instruction resumed in 2021, comprehensive training was completed with all K-5 teachers and instructional coaches to implement the CLE learning curriculum. And at the high school and middle school, training on trauma-informed practices and restorative practices continued. CSD must have a comprehensive SEL framework in order to lead and guide us into the realization of all SEL competencies. Therefore, we have developed this theory of action. If the district commits to implementing high-quality, evidence-based SEL programs that align with our standards and values, then schools will create supportive and inclusive learning environments that foster strong, cool climate and culture. And teachers will integrate SEL practices and curriculum into daily routines and classroom instructions within the classroom so that students will learn skills in behavior, attendance, academic performance, and overall well-being. With the district's commitment in place, our schools will be equipped to cultivate environments that explicitly teach social-emotional learning competency. By implementing high-quality SEL program, programming, fostering supportive environments, and integrating SEL into daily instruction, we can expect to see significant improvement in student outcomes. Exaggerated implementation will allow us to systematically and effectively integrate SEL across the district and ensure uniform practices. By gradually rolling out the initiative, we can ensure that each step is thoroughly planned and executed. Key actions in year zero would include establishing a core SEL leadership team and conducting a comprehensive needs assessment, adopting SEL standards, selecting and aligning curriculum, and finalizing implementation with district, and starting professional development for the leaders and staff. Key actions in year one would be providing comprehensive training to the middle and high school leaders and staff that align with the selected curriculum. The second half of the year, we would monitor implementation through regular visits and audits. Key action steps for year two would be enhancing family and community partnerships and opening up an option for our elementary schools to pilot or opt into the curriculum. Key action steps for year three would be focusing on sustaining and improving practices, evaluating student outcomes, and ensuring long-term sustainability. So how will we know how we're doing? Our main indicator is the Georgia Department of Education School Climate Star Rating on the College and Career Ready Performance Index. The rating is a diagnostic tool used by the Georgia DOE to determine if a school is on the right path to school improvement and addressing school climate. It is calculated using school-level data from the Georgia Student Health Survey, Georgia School Personnel Survey, Georgia Parent Survey, student discipline data, attendance records for students, teachers, staff, and administrators. So per the, on the slide, you'll see that there's some data. Per the Student Health Survey, one of the surveys, which is included in the Climate Star Rating and is administered to students in grades six through twelve, sixty-eight percent of students expressed feeling stressed sometimes or always. They also reported that their top three causes of stress were schoolwork, school grades, and school grades and performance, and problems with friends, in that order. This highlights the importance of SEL in the middle and high school setting to support our students, not only academically but emotionally as they navigate the stressors of school, in the areas of pro-social and coping skills. We have to focus on sixth, twelfth, as these students are closest to graduation, and they have to be ready to leave CSD ready for the world. Finally, with the support of Metro Rita, we can obtain a true community school model designation for our student center located at Decatur High School. Currently, both of our student centers are considered wraparound centers. A wraparound center is a school-based approach to promoting student academic success by developing, securing, and coordinating services and support through means of a program, service, policy, or center. Now, the differences, the community school model provides a customized approach while focusing on fundamental community school best practices that are guided by four main pillars, which you see on this graphic. To reach the community school model designation, we must have deep levels of community engagement in order to be able to use student, family, and community voices to determine assets, needs, and priorities via a comprehensive needs assessment. The mix of offerings can vary, but some of the most common services and supports are medical, dental, mental health services, tutoring, and other academic support, and resources for families, such as parent education classes, job training, placement services, housing assistance, and nutrition programs. A community school model is a strategy that helps meet every student and their family where they are. Does this mean that our DHS student center is closing? No. Does this mean that the mental health services currently provided will stop? No. In essence, the center will go from a place where wraparound support and services are delivered. delivered to a place that serves as a community hub. I want to be clear that the community school model is not the same thing as Communities in School, which is a nonprofit organization. Communities in Schools work in school full-time to remove barriers by building relationships with students to help them stay in school and succeed in life. So in conclusion, social emotional learning is part of a high, of high-quality education for all students and supports academic performance, school climate, graduation rate, and other important developmental, developmental outcomes and life goals. To bring all of this to life over the next couple of years, we will prioritize three activities: developing uniform practices, strengthening tier-one instruction with a dedicated FCL curriculum, and reaching a community school model designation for Decatur High School students. Your opinion, are there any questions or feedbacks that you'd like for us to consider?
Um, I have kind of like a question concern. So, especially in high school, I guess my question is how would this be implemented in a way where kids would take this seriously? Because last year we had advisement where we would watch videos on how to have good conversations, on how to cope with stress, things that kind of seem to fall under social emotional learning already. And we don't have that anymore, but that's what we had last year. And none of the students took it seriously. It was kind of just, you sat through it, you didn't really pay attention, you didn't make a good about your feelings because the teacher made you, and then you moved on. So I guess, yeah, like how would this be different, especially with the high school kids?
So, very good question, and I think that it all comes down to how a teacher prioritizes and delivers, and that's why teacher engagement is also important. Kind of it all comes down to that, but I think that's a big part of it, which is why we would want to start with training our leaders at the secondary level and making sure that they are then able to be instructional leaders for this work as well in their buildings with the teachers and the staff. And then having a dedicated curriculum is going to be key because it's not that fragmented approach of different lessons that are not inappropriate being developed now, right? There are the counselors involved and teachers are involved, but it's a true dedicated curriculum that I think students will see the value in its progression. I hope students will see the value of this progression.
Can you follow us, I think Sophie's question in terms of advisement? So is this something that all high school teachers would be trained on?
Yes, so this would be instructional in nature, right? So it would be that all the teachers that are working with an advisement and at the middle school are when?
So it would just be a part of the curriculum, I guess? So if each teacher would have, no matter IB, AP, on level, like it would just be?
They would have a dedicated curriculum.
And would it be, would there be like a, a way to, like, would it be like a curriculum and then a test with it, or would it just be like embedded in? I guess I'm kind of confused.
I would, I would say that as you are selecting a curriculum, there are various screeners that are typically a part of that work to, and I say a part of that work because as you are screening or taking inventory from a student perspective, then you're able to assess whether or not the demonstration of those skills and knowledge is actually changing. So it's not a test, like you get it right, you get it wrong. It's more of a screener. And the screener is, that is used is closely aligned to the standards that would need to be developed, that is aligned to the Castle Will that was on that first slide.
Do you see that far? And I don't know if there's anything to do with this information right now, but when I look at the Georgia Health, on slide seven, sixty-eight percent of all of the students, right, who took the survey?
That's right.
Identify having stress and I don't, I think, does the climate score also factor in numbers like, I don't know if you can even answer this and if it's relevant, like if most of our students took the survey, and therefore most of our students are saying that they feel stressed. And then I think I heard that the top?
Yeah, we need to get, we would need to get back to you on that.
Okay, absolutely.
Look at the end, if you will, the response, right? But it, you know, for it to actually be listed, there has to be a threshold that is met.
Okay. Well, I was going to ask, I love this, you know, what we're doing, but in the, in the shorter term, for lack of a better word, if we do have that many students that are experiencing stress, and it, I heard two of the causes were schoolwork and grades. So, like in my world, we shut down infinite campus before we had that, down that students were left. But I'm not a doctor, but anyway, so I would just wonder if it's something that we need to look at. Thank you.
All right. So to be thoughtful around social emotional learning, we must approach it similarly to that of any other type of curriculum or standard. We need to dine. First, we need to design, and that's the D. That's what we're doing this year, and next year we will I, which is to implement. The next same way, we will be thoughtful around allocation of resources with FY26 budget. So you heard this conversation, as it will have implications for the budget for FY26.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Holt, for the presentation. I've always said the best marker for me to know if students connected is the percentage of students who have a trusted adult in the school building with them. This plan, my hope is that a hundred percent of our students can say yes to that level of connection, and I really appreciate your, your question, Sophie, that I referenced on opening. Being old man in the sea, and I, and I kind of think of like many times, this curriculum is hard to get a group of kids to do it, and so I'm excited about the part that's training the trainers on how to make this curriculum work well. Look forward to it. Our next presentation.
Yes, Chair Herndon, I would like to introduce Ms. Pascal Pierre Thompson, a Harvard Graduate School resident, to provide an overview of her strategic project with the City Schools of Decatur.
Good afternoon, Board Chair Herndon, Vice Chair Salton, esteemed members of the board, Student Board Representative Delena, Superintendent Dr. Zima Whitaker. My name is Hapdahl Pierre Thompson, and as you know, I'm a graduate school resident. I'm currently a student in the Education Leadership Program, studying my doctoral The Education Leadership Program, also known as the ECLD program, is a three-year program that culminates in a ten-month residency. During the final ten months of the program, students are required to complete a residency experience that is defined by mutual learning between myself and CSD, a strategic project that leads to change in the district, and a very long capstone paper that analyzes and reflects on my experiences and my place. So I got started. I joined on July eighth, and I jumped right to work. Dr. Whitaker and I facilitated empathy interviews with principals, assistant principals, instructional coaches, teachers, parents, and students on disproportionate citizen data for black students on day one. This helps me better understand what is meant by "all" in Decatur. My experience on day one illustrated Dr. Whitaker's very serious commitment to serving all students. It was for this reason I came to CSD, to witness a committed black woman superintendent navigate the politics of education leadership while standing firm in her belief that all students are capable of reaching high expectations. Yet still, day one left me wondering, where does my residency fit in CSD's commitment to all students? This residency supports Strategic Accelerator One, which is students' success in all areas. And so I wondered, how might I support student success in all areas in just ten months? Given my experience in education policy as the Director of School Improvement at the Redan Department of Education, where I led the State Department's first equity initiative, and my teaching and school leadership experience in Boston, Brooklyn, Harlem, and in private traditional public and charter schools, I have and continue to embody the "all moves all" mantra, which is why I was excited to get on board with the strategic vision. My experiences coupled with the strategic direction of CSD has led to my residency focused on school leader development and an infrastructure for school improvement that can foster a learning organization that is focused on equitable outcomes. So my strategic project will focus on the technical tools that are necessary for school improvement, a monitoring system and structure, but more importantly, the adaptive change. What inspires people to change business as usual? My capstone paper will address this question, analyzing why don't most school leaders and teachers just will to change? And to what extent does change lead to equitable outcomes? Here's my evolving theory of action. If we build a sustainable framework with school leader support and systems to monitor the progress of school improvement, then school leaders will act as agents of continuous improvement to promote each student's academic success and well-being, which will result in systems of support for teachers that foster continuous improvement and ultimately lead to equitable outcomes for all students. I will build a framework for school leadership that includes a strong monitoring system for school improvement, and this work will help lead to equitable outcomes for all in just ten months. I've started my strategic plan, and to Harvard for my theory of action yesterday, and once I'm approved, I'll prepare my draft capstone components for December's commission. The capstone is due in March. I'll receive feedback and submit the final capstone in April. I'll then extend my residency here at CSD and defend my capstone before my program directors and my family. While I'm here at CSD, I plan to make the most of my residency. I commit to learning from the outstanding cabinet members, to understanding the political landscape here in Decatur, creating a support framework for school leadership, and developing a monitoring system for school improvement. Thank you for your attention, and I'll open it up to questions.
We're all excited to see what comes out of this. This is something we've been talking about for a while, so we're pretty thrilled you're here. It's gonna be a very pleasant to see how this all works out.
Great. Excited too. More pressure.
That was the subtext.
So actually, tonight was a dry run for Ms. Thompson because in two weeks, we actually head to Harvard where she gets to present where she is thus far the strategic project, and I will be accompanying her in that presentation. So, good work.
Excellent. That's awesome.
Thank you.
I am sure you'll do well.
Yes.
You're evaluating theory of action and a great sustainability and equity near and dear to the heart of this board. Dr. Whitaker, if you could introduce the next presentation.
Yes, I would like to call on Mr. Sergio Perez, Chief Operations Officer, to provide an update on our capital plan.
Dr. Whitaker? Good afternoon, Board Chair Herndon, chaired by Chair Dr. Salton, members, esteemed members of the board, Student Board Representatives, and Superintendent Dr. Zima Whitaker. At the beginning of April 2024, we engaged Wolfper consultants who have acquired competitive strategies, our regular partners for enrollment projections, to perform a comprehensive facility condition assessment and lifecycle analysis to evaluate the state and needs of our school district facilities. Wolfper assessment experts inspect all facilities, document the existing conditions, and inventory all equipment to determine its status and lifecycle for our capital planning projection. We're including gathering data on everything from interior finishes to major mechanics and plumbing systems. Additionally, Wolfper collaborated with CSD staff to review the history of each building and discuss recommended replacements. All data and information were analyzed to finalize the facility condition assessment. CSD has identified four key strategic accelerators that leverage our strengths to improve our areas of growth. We operate with a specific emphasis on organizational effectiveness and excellence. Facility Condition Index is an industry standard metric used to compare, to provide a competitive indicator of the condition of a site. It is calculated by dividing the total cost of needed repairs or replacements, known as a physical condition budget, by the total replacement value of the facility. Facility Condition Index is a quality rating expressed as a comparison between the cost of repairing a facility to light new conditions versus the cost of fully replacement of a facility. This ratio is typically expressed as a percentage, and its use prioritizes mainly the capital funding decision. The average Facility Condition Index for City Schools of Decatur is twelve point seventy-seven percent. Our buildings range from age for those constructed in 1915 to those built as recent as 2019. On average, our buildings were built in 1955 and encompass a total of nine hundred thousand square feet. We see and we are aware of Clermont Elementary School Facility Condition Index of twenty-five point thirty-three percent. The building is in fair, good condition with no significant structural, structural issues. However, the roof membrane is a primary system that needs replacing. This is a priority project expected to be brought into alignment over the next year. Once the roof system is replaced, the Facility Condition Index for Clermont Elementary will change to green, indicating the building is in good condition. In the Facility Condition Index, anything below twenty percent is in a good condition. Twenty to fifty percent require larger capital system or replacements. Fifty percent and more requires a full renovation or rebuild. This is like provide a campus-by-campus breakdown of our school district. The chart shows the percentage of total Facility Condition Index and condition needs by location. Largest schools require more funding, which explains why Decatur High School and Beacon Hill Middle School represent the largest percentages. On the contrary, newer buildings have the lowest total dollar needs. The average age of a main instructional school is forty-nine years, according to survey findings released by the National Center of Education Statistics. So thirty-eight percent of these facilities were built even earlier or before 1970, notwithstanding older buildings maintenance. While older school buildings don't require maintenance, it is important to note that all our buildings have undergone several renovations over the past twelve years, which is reflected in our district's average Facility Condition Index of twelve point seventy-seven percent. Contrary to the belief that newer, new buildings are maintenance-free, they often require significant upkeep over time. Maintenance costs may decrease for one, for a year or two following a major construction project, whether new or renovated. However, many new school buildings eventually demand more maintenance because they lack a robust construction quality of earlier era. According to our structural engineer, all our buildings are structurally sound and provide a safe, nurturing environment for students to succeed. This slide presents safe recommended repairs and replacements across all schools organized by system. by system. The codes perceived in each category follow the Uniform Classification System, a standard method to categorize building elements. The letters and numbers represent different categories and subcategories of building components, such as electrical systems, HVAC, conditioning, and roof systems. Facility Assessment reveals several pieces of equipment nearing or exceeding respective life cycles. At Beacon Hill Middle School, the water heaters and boilers are 21 years old, the carrier chiller is 18 years old, and the package units are 25 years old. Claremont Elementary has water heaters that are 19 years old, and water source heat pumps units over 14 years old. At ECLC, the RTU rooftop unit, package units and exhaust fans are 19 years old. At Decatur High School, the split units and package units are 23 years old, exhaust fans are 22 years old, and the water heaters and boilers are over 24 years old. This slide provides an overview of the systems that are recommended for repair or replacement in all schools. The district's priority is to provide a nurturing, safe, and welcoming environment where our students can thrive and succeed. These systems of HVAC, electrical, roofing, and security are central to achieving this goal. This slide details the projected cost for these systems across the district over the next three years. Based on facility assessment and life cycle forecasting data from 2026 to 2028, a total of 19 million cost projections are the recommended need over the next three years to keep up with the maintenance and large capital items across our schools. So now, what? The school district's top priorities include building the duplexes, replacing HVAC systems that have exceeded the life cycle, updating plumbing equipment such as water heaters and boilers, Claremont roof replacement and rest on renovation, upgrading flooring, replacing the dirt field at Decatur High School, enhancing security systems, and repairing parking lot. Please see the attached addendum for more information. And this is live, present a what is a scenario for the district. It is illustrating the impacts of inaction over the next 15 years. Currently, the district has 47 million in total needs, with an average condition index rating just under 13% across all sites. But incorporating all facility assessment data and life cycle forecasting, this is not just shows that if no action is taken, the district would require approximately 184 millions to address system repairs in all our schools. Additionally, the average facility condition rating will rise from 13 to 35%. Duplexes. We have completed a set of drawings that are ready for permitting and held a meeting with the City of Decatur Building officials to guide additional detail. We engaged a civil engineer consultant to provide expert site planning, landscape, architectural, and civil engineer services for the project. The landscaping and architectural consultant will develop a construction drawing and associated details. The meeting will be handled through the City of Decatur in two separate packets being created. The consultant will provide construction drawings for site-related items based on the appropriate preliminary design, which may be combined and determined by the consultant. This sidewalk construction drawings will include demolition and removal, layout saving plan, rating, erosion, sedimentation, and pollution control, sidewalk construction, tree protection replacement, and planting plant. The next step, the next steps involve partnering with a high-performance building aircraft consultant to understand certification requirements and prepare the request for proposal package for a general contractor to handle the demolition and construction of duplexes. We anticipate submitting permits within the next three months, with demolition and construction expected to take six months. The projected potential opening will be at the end of December 2025. The estimates will be between 1.4 million allocated. Legacy Park Track and Field. The project has reached a few milestones with the completion of the site, stone water management, underground detention system, and a stadium light. Work is currently underway on the field house by the sports turf. Upcoming places include the gym renovations, the installation of the protective turf for the athletic field and the track. The project is on track for completion by January 7, 2025. The track and the field will feature lighting and natural seating areas. Improving to the existing gym will include the addition of a ramp, and all access and pathways will be AEA compliant. Additionally, a hallway will be renovated to provide public restrooms and storage space for both the Parks and Recreation Department of City of Decatur and the City Schools of We are excited to announce our partnership with GNC to design a new early learning center on West Trinity adjacent to the Decatur housing authority. This collaboration represents our shared commitment to early learning, closing the achievement gap, and creating a brighter future for our community. Our work together centers on developing a vision around the needs of our students and families while honoring the values that we all hold dear: sustainability, inclusivity, and innovation. At the heart of this project is a location to ensure every child has access to quality early education in an environment that nurtures, nurtures growth and creativity. GNC is leading a collaborative and visionary team, which included CSD staff, panelists, community leaders, and even aspiring architecture students from high school. This team is asked to help him to check a design that not only serves our community, but also reflects our commitment to protect green spaces and creating a sustainable building. We met in August, and we are meeting again tomorrow. During the October 8 pre-work session, the board, the board will engage with an early education panel and hear from neighboring districts on lessons learned and recommendations. As we continue with the GNC project approach theory path, we'll be working closely with the City of Decatur and City Schools of Decatur to further refine the vision at the joining meeting on October 15. Together, we are not just building a center, we are building a future. We're looking forward to sharing more information about this work at the December board meeting.
So, board, I was asked, board, I was asked in March of 2024 to look further into the duplex project. As you can see on Slide 6, we've allocated over a million dollars to the project, which includes the demolition of two houses and the rebuilding of two duplexes on each site. Also, today's presentation included the safety allocation of $200,000 for FY26. Based upon the results of the third-party audit and a fresh look by our new Safety and Security Director, Mr. James Brown, I would like to reallocate the funds for FY26 to safety enhancements. Enhancements would include items such as vestibules that are all of our campuses. Last year, the board approved the procurement of synergists and crisis go. Also, we adopted a resolution that was provided by Be Smart regarding safe storage of firearms. These initiatives demonstrate this board's and also this administration's prioritization of safety, and I believe reallocating would be another. So I welcome your feedback on Slide 6.
I think that we certainly appreciate the investigation into the duplex. I think that it's going to remain a desire, at least of mine, for us to continue to pursue opportunities to enhance our recruitment and retention of teachers. But it's just going to be tough to recruit and retain teachers if we haven't made the appropriate investments in safety and the environment of schools. And so at 1.4 million dollar expenditure to help a very small number of teachers versus the one that keeps all of our teachers safe, I think is a no-brainer in terms of where I prefer to see those dollars deployed. And in case it's not clear, on the safety.
Agreed. I think in light of not just recent events, but I mean, it's just, you know, our buildings are, are old, and we know that we need these upgrades to increase safety. So I think, you know, that has to be the priority.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay. I, I've said, I mean, part of it is that request for what to do with that land predates you, and we've seen a lot done with that land with the, with the, um, the housing, some digital learning and distant learning stuff, and so we're more active with it. To me, and I, and I said this when, when you and I spoke, that, I mean, priority 1A is fixing the roof at Claremont, right? Like you said, I think, and safety is up there with that. It is, it is the roof, it's a structural issue. And so I've, I've told you, I mean, let us know as a board what we need to do to prioritize safety, and I think you'll get a lot of very quick yeses, and we'll find where we pay for it. That seems like an easy one. It is a pipe dream, but I'm with, with Board Member Utz, it is something that I would like to see, see us do over the long, long term, but not at the expense of some of the things we discussed today in terms of recommendations for safety.
So, I, I, we will. You know, I, last, last year, I sat here with you all, and we talked about the DHS recovery units that were older than my marriage. I think at this point, the roof is about almost there as well at Claremont. So our Chief of Operations shared that we are prioritizing that for Claremont. Once again, I can't do it when students are there, but it will be done, and we will put the priority there because I do not like the fact that it is not in the good category with the other schools, especially.
Can I be, may I just ask the explicit question to get the explicit answer? According to this plan, Claremont will move into either the good or excellent category of the capital assessment. Is that a good answer? Okay, thank you.
All right. So bringing the capital plan presentation to a close, I want to reiterate that we are only at the conceptual drawing phase of the new Early Childhood Learning Center. Previously published conceptual drawings actually date back to 2017, and they were not created by the architect providing professional services now. In December, we will present a conceptual drawing, which will do a couple of things. It will provide that early learning space, but it will also maximize our green space. So the board will continue to engage in that conversation, one, through the early learning panel next month in pre-work session, and then in the joint city commission, City Schools of Decatur, conversation on the 15th of October. We will take all of that feedback to then present on, in December, the actual conceptual drawing for what would be the new Early Childhood Learning Center now in 2024. With all that shared today, we will go back, revise that budget, so it won't be that 1.4 listed for the duplexes to reflect the conversation next month.
Just out of curiosity, the 433 Facility Conditions Index of tally, what is that caused by? It's a very new building.
Yeah, it normally, it goes reduced by maybe the ages start aging, the roofing that requires some maintenance, so they, you know, reduce some points according with the, if they start, they start aging, but a, a, no, it is not, but it means it's in a pretty good condition.
And there is an addendum to this presentation that gives the specifics on each building and what was found in those facilities in segment. So anyone that's tuning in assembly, that addendum has the specifics for school.
Is it named my children by name?
No, no, just.
Sorry about that. Do you have any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sergio. Appreciate you. And Dr. Whitaker, we look forward to that revised budget and what we're going to do with our capital projects moving forward. Hearing no further questions, we will recess now, return at 5 o'clock to begin our regular board meeting. Thank you. We're still early. My iPhone doesn't tell me it's 5 o'clock. It's not 5 o'clock. I'm sorry.
Oh, the world's not 72.
Okay. Sorry, my iPhone doesn't tell me it's 5 o'clock yet. So I can't start. All right, we'll get started. We will now call this meeting to order at 5:00 PM. We ask that you silence all your cellphones at the time. We will begin with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I ask that everyone join me in a moment's silent reflection. Now I ask all who are able to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic which stands on the nation's ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Our mission is to inspire and enable student growth through meaningful and engaging learning experiences supported by highly qualified and caring educators in a safe and inviting environment. First item up there is the agenda revisions. Board members, are there any revisions to the agenda this evening? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve today's agenda?
There is.
Thank you. Board, you have a board member, Johnson Davis. Second motion, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The next agenda is the approval minutes from the previous board meeting. Do I have a motion to approve August's regular board minutes?
I'll move.
Thank you, Board Member Johnson Davis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Board Member Utz, any discussion of last month's minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Whitaker, we had the crowd join us this evening. Are we recognizing anybody?
Yes, Chair Herdon, we are recognizing the Beacon Hill gents as well as this year's Teachers of the Year. I would like to call on Mrs. Karen Newton-Scott, Deputy Superintendent, and Mrs. Jennifer Burton, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, to facilitate tonight's recognition.
Thank you, Board Chair Herdon, Vice Chair Soltan, esteemed members of the board, and Dr. Whitaker. Today, I have the pleasure of presenting the Gents Mentoring Program at Beacon Hill Middle School. In 2008, then Assistant Principal Derek Thomas founded the Young Men of Distinction, a mentoring group designed to address the needs of students feeling disconnected from their school community. This initiative was the first CSD-sponsored mentoring group aimed at enhancing student engagement and fostering a more inclusive school experience for a targeted group of students. A renewed focus on this type of mentoring emerged in 2017 when several dedicated staff members established the Gents Program, short for Gentlemen Exceeding the Necessary Tools for Success. Currently, this group is led by Dr. Charlie McAdoo, Jordan Muse, and Dr. Melvin Radcliffe. This group is also, also worked This group is also, also working in partnership with our district's equity team and has created a supportive environment for the young men at Beacon Hill Middle School. The program needs weekly providing a space for enrichment and fellowship that extends beyond traditional academics. Its goal includes fostering a sense of community, encouraging positive behavior, promoting academic integrity, and nurturing character development with a focus on integrity and moral significance. At this time, we would like to invite each participant to join us upfront as I call your names, as we present the group with a certificate of recognition on behalf of the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education and our Superintendent, Dr. Whitaker. So up, up first, I'm going to have the mentors, Dr. Radcliffe, Dr. McAdoo, Mr. Muse, if you will come up so that our gentlemen can have you greeting them. You can stand right there in the middle. Yep. Okay. This evening with the 24, 25 gents roster, we have Mark Alexander, Evan Dallas, Nathan D. Drummond, Brayden Griffin, Jason Elder, Stefan Ferguson, Marlon Haygood, Lisa Goodley, Silas Lee, Daya Mohammed, Delani Osman, Warren Patel, Zachary Pilbert, Chase Kitter, Rizzo? Purtle, sorry, Chase. Chase Purtle, Makaya Radcliffe, Makaya Radcliffe, Boaz Shelton, Kristen Bim, Mike Smith, Hayden Stevens, Jonathan White, Jaden Young. And I see two other gentlemen sitting with us with the... Please, on board of fellows, your names. Ah, New Sharif, AJ Gray. Please give these gentlemen a round of applause. We are so proud of the young men who have embraced the values of gent and answered the call to be gentlemen exceeding with the necessary tools for success. I would like to invite the board and Superintendent Whitaker down to take a photograph with the group at a time.
Okay. Are you going to hold? Hold it down.
Next, I'd like to invite Assistant Superinten-, our, our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, Mrs. Jennifer Burton, to the podium to recognize our Teachers of the Year.
Thank you, Ms. Newton Scott, and good, good evening, all. In the spring, each school selected one teacher who motivates and inspires their students to achieve, demonstrates leadership within their school, and collaborates with others. Here to congratulate our Teachers of the Year is Decatur Education Foundation Executive Director Megan Berardi. DES is generously providing a check for each winner to support innovation in their classrooms. Thank you, DES, for your continuous support of our fantastic educators. Tonight, I have the honor of presenting all of our school Teacher of the Year representatives. When I call your names, please come forward and then remain against the wall so you'll be ready for our picture after. Asia Sylvis is the older ones teacher at College Heights Elementary School. Asia is passionate about fostering a strong classroom community, implementing conscious discipline, and creating meaningful experiences. In her classroom, she aims to help every student gain confidence through age-appropriate independence and play. Next, we have Monica Nelson from Claremont, a passionate music educator with 17 years of experience, has established successful choral programs at Southeast Bullock and Beacon Hill Middle School, with her students earning honors in Georgia Music Educators Association competitions. Since 2014, she's taught at Claremont, where she engages students in meaningful performances and co-directs the annual school-wide musical. We have Susan Shuen from Glenwood, who has been a dedicated educator for 29 years, with over 20 years of service in City Schools of Decatur, where she's been honored as Teacher of the Year three times. She holds a master's endorsements in gifted education and math, which she integrates into her classrooms to enhance student learning. Eleanor Ball from Oakhurst dedicated her career to early childhood education, beginning in a local childcare setting, and later earning a master's in special education. After teaching in Fulton County, where she was nominated for Teacher of the Year and served as a model classroom for, for Bright From the Start, she joined CSD in 2013 and has been a special education teacher at Oakhurst for the past 10 years. From Winona Park, with 23 years of dedicated service in education, Kelly is driven by her passion for early childhood education. She eventually transitioned to teaching kindergarten at Glenwood and now is teaching at Winona Jamie Montgomery from Westchester has been a dedicated educator in CSD for over 10 years, beginning her career teaching in the preschool classroom at DHS Child Development Center before transitioning to kindergarten at Westchester. A lifelong learner committed to excellence, she holds multiple endorsements, which enhance her ability to, to inspire and teach her students. Next, we have Corinne Smith from FAB, who has dedicated 30 years to education, spending the first 19 years as a fourth and fifth grade teacher, and the last 11 as a media specialist, a role she considers the best job in the world. After teaching in Gwinnett and APS, Corinne has spent the happiest 10 years of her career at CSD, where she runs book clubs, coaches the reading bowl teams, and mentors over 40 junior media specialists. Christine Kramer from Beacon Hill Middle School is absent this evening, but will be joining us next month at our board meeting to be recognized. We have Dr. Cassie Smith from Decatur High School, a passionate educator, scientist, and student advocate with a PhD in astronomy from Georgia State University, where she discovered a brown dwarf and contributed to the discovery of one of the youngest known exoplanets. Now, in her eight years of teaching, including four at Decatur High School, she's known for her creative approach to teaching physics, where she makes learning fun and engaging. Dr. Smith also advises several student clubs, leads the high school's PBIS program, and initiated a mentorship program for younger students. All of our school representatives submitted applications to be considered for the City Schools of Decatur Teacher of the Year. I'm proud to announce that the overall City Schools of Decatur Teacher of the Year is Cali Street Elementary School's fifth grade teacher, Jessica Young. Jessica's classroom is special. It's collaboration, talking, dancing, standing on chairs, but most importantly, learning. I asked colleagues who work closely with Ms. Young to share what it's like to work with her, and they said, she is an excellent example of a place where student, her classroom is an excellent example of a place where students feel safe and supported. She celebrates their differences and capitalizes on their individual talents to make the room a loving and engaging place to be. She's willing to dive into anything that she feels that will help her students, and she's not afraid to ask for help or to collaborate with other staff members. Another said, Ms. Young is deeply invested in her students' success and the kids feel it. I see them wanting to live up to her high expectations. She's not afraid to communicate her care to them, to say, I believe in you, you can do this. And her belief inspires theirs. All of her students rise to meet her rigorous standards. They are orderly, engaged, and they don't make excuses. She creates a sense of connection and community in her classroom and beyond that make kids excited to be here. And I could go on and on and on. Ms. Young, we are thrilled that you have been named our 2024, 2025 Teacher of the Year. Ms. Young will now apply to be the 2025, 2026 Teacher of the Year, Georgia Teacher of the Year, which will be named in May. So we wish you best of luck in your next steps, and we congratulate all of our fantastic winners. Board members, please come down to take a picture with the phenomenal educators. And the board is kind of... Time to time, just to board. But, um, you have her to go back here.
Can you get the opportunity to criticize someone, Dan? Say yes.
I, I have a criticizing limit. I just criticized her for trying to hide.
No, I knew.
There will be record. Travel safely, travel safely.
Okay. Next, on the agenda item, Dr. Whitaker, I assume you have a report this evening?
Yes, Chair Herndon. CSD families, I would be remiss if I did not begin by providing my condolences to the Barrow County school system, and specifically Appalachia High School, and the entire wider community. Our thoughts are with the students, staff, and families as they cope with their grief and the trauma of this recent tragedy. I must also express my support for my colleague and first-year superintendent, Dr. Dallas Laduck, as he joins his school community in their grief while determining the difficult path forward. During these unsettling times, we all must join together to navigate the uncertainty ahead. Students, families, and staff are encouraged to utilize our district's resources, such as those offered through the Decatur Student Center. The National Association of School Psychologists, also known as MATHS, has additional resources on its website to assist families and educators in speaking with children about violence. The Georgia Department of Education, in partnership with Accenture Health, the provider of the GOES Employee Assistance Program, is also providing school employees access to a series of support webinars. They began yesterday, Monday, September 9th, and will continue through Friday, September 13th, 2024. One of Accenture's health clinicians experienced in conducting critical incident responses will help normalize trauma responses and lead attendees through what to expect following a critical incident, and provide support to help navigate this very trying time. I further want to remind our CSD community of how critical it is to remain vigilant to maintain safety in, on, and around our school community. If you see something, please say something immediately. We are listening. As CSD strives to ensure safety of all students and staff, I want to... I want to mention that September is National Suicide Prevention Month, and this week is National Suicide Prevention Week. CSD is responding to the national call to promote awareness of this mental health crisis and to share resources to assist with prevention. At this time, I would like to bring back Mrs. Karen Newton-Scott, our deputy superintendent, and Mrs. Jennifer Burton, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning to provide results of our universal screening assessment.
Good evening, Board Chair Herndon, Vice Chair Dr. Fulton, esteemed Board members, Student Board Representative Delancey, Dr. Jima Whitaker. STAR is a computer adaptive test that takes, on average, 15 to 20 minutes. It is our state-approved universal screening tool that identifies students who need additional learning opportunities. This can be remediation or acceleration, which supports student success in all areas. STAR Early Literacy is read to all students and assesses foundational literacy skills, including phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary, and comprehension. At the beginning of the school year, all students in kindergarten through third grade take STAR Early Literacy on the computer, along with two Curriculum-Based Measures, or CBMs, which are administered by a teacher. This combination of assessments is required by the Georgia Literacy Act. If a K through 3 student scores an 853 or above on the early literacy assessment, the student will take STAR Reading and does not need to take STAR Early Literacy again that year. Separately, our pre-K students are taking early literacy three times per year. All students in grades 4 through 12 take STAR Reading three times per year. STAR Reading assesses word recognition, vocabulary, and comprehension, and is not read to students. All students K through 12 take STAR Math three times per year. This is a sample STAR report that families have already received. The scale score is a key number that summarizes your child's overall performance on the assessment. This student's scale score is 1106. The state benchmark is shown in red, yellow, blue, and green. The report shows where the student's mastery is on the state standard. Here you can see that this student is in the developing category. Next, we have the percentile rank. This tells us how the student compares to other students in the same grade nationwide. A percentile rank of 52 means that this student scored better than 52% of students in the same grade across the country. It gives us an idea of where they stand relative to their peers. The percentile rank is used for EIP and REP qualification. EIP and REP support students with academics. The percentile rank is also used as an indicator for the gifted review process. STAR will be given in December and again in May after the end-of-grade and end-of-course tests. Now Deputy Superintendent Karen Newton-Scott will share the fall results.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Good evening again. I'd like to transition by posing a question to you. Which year is the most crucial in a student's academic career? Is it 3rd grade? All of them?
Third.
Third. You get the gold star. It is 3rd grade. 3rd grade is key because it marks the shift from learning to read to using reading to gain knowledge. Up until that point, most students have been decoding words using their knowledge of letters, patterns, and sounds. In 3rd grade, they start reading more complex informational text. Students who haven't developed strong reading skills by this time often fall behind, and the gap can widen over time, while skilled readers continue to learn and expand their vocabulary. This underscores why the early literacy section of the STAR test is so important. We are now able to consistently target foundational skills that are essential for readers as early as pre-K. Because STAR Early Literacy is a screener, the outcomes are reported slightly different. Based on a review of cut scores from several state assessments and guidance from the RTI Response to Intervention Experts, STAR uses the 40th percentile as the screening benchmark, which is the minimum expected student performance or achievement level. Students below this benchmark generally require some form of intervention to accelerate their growth and bring them into the benchmark ranks. We will not use any state benchmarking for early literacy as it is designed to assess very early foundational skills before students are tested exclusively on state standards. So, to examine the results of the early literacy assessment, we will use the 40th percentile as an indicator opposed to seeing the achievement levels we are accustomed to seeing with tests like the Georgia Milestone. So on this slide, you can see our overall performance by grade level in the first frame. Currently, 80% or more of our pre-K through 3rd grade students are at or above the 40th percentile, which means that the majority of our students are on target for where we would anticipate them. Please note that the grade band labeled "other" represents our pre-K students and those outside grade K3 who also took the early literacy test. The second frame presents the data in four performance tiers based on the 40th percentile: at or above benchmark, on watch, intervention, and urgent intervention. 83% of our students are at or above the benchmark of 40th percentile for early literacy. 10% of our students are on watch and are being closely monitored and supported through interventions and progress monitoring to ensure that they may continue to grow towards proficient mark. On watch means that a student's score ranged between the 25th and the 39th percentile. The two lowest tier performances are intervention and urgent intervention, which indicate a performance at or below the 25th percentile. 4.4% of our students scored below the 10th and 25th percentile and will receive intervention in the areas of need. 2.1% scored below the 10th percentile and are flagged for urgent intervention. Students scoring in the urgent intervention range will receive more intensive intervention with identified literacy specialists and oversight from our district literacy coordinators and NCSF personnel. In the last frame, you will see the percentage of students performing at or above the 40th percentile by racial groups. There is a continued need to focus on all of our students having a secure early literacy foundation, with an emphasis on the groups where we have yet to reach 80% or more proficiency rates. For example, our Black subgroups currently have 59.7%, have a 59.7% proficiency rate. That's 122 of our students in this subgroup who are already at benchmark. At our K2 level, that leaves only 35 Black students across five schools who are not yet at that mark and will need intervention. And at 3rd grade level, there are only 14. That's roughly 50 students. We certainly have more than enough support to be able to partner with schools and families to ensure that by the end of this school year, these 50 students have grown to higher levels of proficiency. Once students have mastered the foundational skills, they can advance to STAR Reading. As Mrs. Burton mentioned, students need a scale score of 853 to move from early literacy to STAR Reading. This level of assessment helps us gauge not only where students are as beginning readers, but also how well they perform against grade-level standards. For example, let's compare two students, Student A and Student B. Both students scored 854 on the early literacy screen, showing that they have a strong grasp of foundational reading skills. When both took the STAR Reading assessment, Student A scored 920, and Student B, on the other hand, scored 1100. This comparison shows that while students had strong foundational skills, Student B's higher STAR Reading score reflects the ability to possibly handle grade-level reading challenges, whereas Student A may need additional support to reach the same level of proficiency. Hence, both ways of benchmarking students is essential. So as we transition to look at the STAR Reading results, we will be examining percentages of students who if tested on the state test this fall with score at or above level. So in this first frame, we see again that 80% or more of our students meet or exceed the state benchmark for their grade level, except in high school, where 75% of the students reach that level. The second frame displays the district-wide performance percentages across different levels. Overall, again, about 80% of students in grades 2 through 12 scored at or above proficient level. In the third frame, we break down the performance by racial and ethnic groups. We observe that Latinx and Black and other subgroups have less than 80% performing at or above proficient level. Additionally, there is a noticeable decline in performance from STAR Early Literacy to STAR Reading for our Black subgroup. This illustrates the importance of securing foundational reading skills early on. Without a strong start, students may fail the test and the expectation to reach the learning and the advanced unit education. STAR Math measures a student's math skills in a variety of areas, including numbers and operations, algebra, geometry, measurement, data analysis, and phonology. It provides information about a student's strengths and weaknesses in these areas and can help teachers identify areas where students may need additional support. Our STAR Math results are organized and shown in the same way as our STAR Reading results. In the first frame, you will see that 65% of students tested are performing at or above the proficient level, with a breakdown by grading. Our math results are not as high as our reading results. This is partly because math skill progression can be slightly different than reading. In math, students encounter new mathematical concepts that vary from grade to grade. For example, we wouldn't expect 5th graders to start the year proficient in multiplying and dividing fractions, but they certainly should be proficient by the end of the year. The second frame shows the percentage of students at different performance levels. Here you will see distinguished, proficient, developing, and beginning levels. Overall, 68.6% of our students across all grades are starting the year at proficient or distinguished level. The third frame also provides a breakdown by racial groups. Again, here we see the same racial groups as in reading that have a lower percentage of students performing at or proficient in math. Overall, our work remains to increase the student outcomes in our subgroup areas for this dataset that would be Latinx and Black students. It is still early in the year, and generally speaking, we are starting the year with strong data as a school district. What will strengthen our work even more is becoming really data-driven and highly skilled in using the information that is provided through our STAR assessments to work in smart ways. Teachers now have detailed information about student strengths and areas for growth before they begin teaching the state mandated curriculum. They can access this information at the standard level or quickly use other tools within STAR to pull for the information needed. This level of at-your-fingertips access allows for strategic lesson planning and personalized practice. At the end of last month, all school leaders participated in professional learning to understand the reports and data that are available at the fielding level. This training focused on using the data to identify classrooms with concentrated needs, best practices to allocate resources effectively, and how to best monitor overall student progress. Leaders have also been shown how to use the data to identify patterns of practice to leverage successful teaching as models for others. As district leaders, we also receive training to interpret our STAR data accurately and ensure that schools are equitably serving all students. This data helps us prioritize district-level resources, both human and financial, and create clear processes for progress monitoring, mastery checks for standards, and personalized practice. Our goal is to build a high-quality streamlined curriculum to maintain focus and continuity, avoiding the pitfalls of spreading ourselves too thin, because engaging with too many things leads to being a master of none. We are excited about this transition and its potential to provide timely and impactful insights into our students' academic progress. We are particularly encouraged by the opportunity to strengthen early literacy and address students' learning needs more effectively. You have in front of you a more detailed look at STAR performance per grade level for each school. We will provide another STAR update in January 2025 after the mid-year administration.
Thank you, Mrs. Newton-Scott and Mrs. Burton, for providing the results of our universal screening. In this same vein, September is also National Attendance Awareness Month and National Literacy Month. CSD's 2024 theme for Attendance Awareness Month is "All In, Every Day Counts." Posters will be placed in every school to reinforce the importance of students being present every day and ready to learn, as well as the value of regular attendance to student achievement. During National Literacy Month, CSD also invites families to support us in emphasizing the importance of literacy by encouraging the students in your life to pick up a book. Reading provides many, many lifelong benefits for students, and the earlier they start, the better. We also invite our entire school community to join us for our Decatur Reads Week, that's September 30th through October 8th. CSD is fortunate to have a wonderful group of parents who will volunteer to be mystery readers during Decatur Reads Week. I will also be a reader, along with the Honorable Stacey Abrams and former UGA and NFL football champion, Malcolm Mitchell. Be sure to check your school newsletters and the new CSD Weekly for a full listing of events. Speaking of literacy, I spent my first superintendent listening and learning about CSD, Decatur, and its history. I may not be able to address every concern. Still, I am working diligently to address those that have historically created barriers for all students to participate in the many offerings. for all students to participate, and the many offerings of our school district, and the decisions and conditions that have disproportionately impacted our most marginalized and vulnerable students. While environmental equity is important, I am mindful of the core focus. In fact, the sole focus of my role and responsibilities as superintendent of the City Schools of Decatur is providing educational equity for all. I am equally aware of my charge to be fiscally responsible for current district assets, including ensuring they are used for their intended purposes. Seven years ago, when CSD purchased the land adjacent to this building from the Decatur Housing Authority, DHA stipulated in the deed that the land be used explicitly for educational purposes. In addition to being aware of this stipulation, as an educator, first and foremost, I have read the research, and I've also seen proof of the link between early learning experiences and school achievement, emotional and social well-being, and also their later adult productivity. Early learning, that is ages zero to three, is the way to provide educational equity in CSD for all students. I am dedicated to following through on the board's plan to make good on our commitment to using the adjacent property to build an educational learning center that will close the achievement gap for our students who need it the most. I look forward to hearing innovative ideas and input from the community on how we can best use our current properties to make an early learning educational facility a reality. An early learning educational facility that provides environmental equity while upholding the wishes outlined in the deed by the previous owners and ensuring that we no longer graduate seniors in the city of Decatur with a thirty-five percent proficiency rate in reading. Finally, in our continuing efforts to execute the All-Indicator Strategic Plan, the goal of building and sustaining an engaging and inclusive culture, I am pleased to announce that six of our schools have been recognized by the Georgia Department of Education for supporting a positive school climate through the implementation of positive behavioral interventions and support, otherwise known as TBIS, in the framework during the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year, four of which are achieving this status for the first time. So congratulations are in order for Claremont and Oakhurst for maintaining operational status. And we are also celebrating Beacon Hill Middle School and Glenwood, Westchester, and Winona Park Elementary Schools for achieving this status for their first time. Thank you to all of our schools for this type of work. It is truly hard work, but it is also good work, and we are confident every one of you can achieve operational status this year. So for all of our schools listening, let's go. Chair Herndon, that completes my report.
Thanks, Dr. Whitaker. Next item is the chair's report. And on behalf of the board, I want to join Dr. Whitaker and school districts across our state and nation in standing with the Barrow County School District, Wyandotte Community, following the tragedy at Appalachia High School. The safety of students and staff is the top priority of every school district, and this tragic event serves as a reminder of the critical role we collectively play in the safety of our school community. I want to reiterate, if you see or hear something suspicious, please report it immediately. We continue to appreciate the community for supporting our students and staff, celebrating our schools, and recognizing this month's observances. In addition to those mentioned, next week marks the beginning of National Hispanic Heritage Month. The theme for twenty twenty-four is "Pioneers of Change: Shaping the Future Together," and beginning from September fifteenth and running through October fifteenth, National Hispanic Heritage Month recognizes the contributions and influences of Hispanic Americans to the history, culture, and achievements of the United States. During today's pre-work, the board updated our communication norms or began the conversation to do so to reflect the addition of our new... We continued our book study on the Governance Corps, school board superintendents, and schools working together, and we heard the administration's recommendations for financial policies and the proposed FY twenty-six budget calendar. There were four presentations we heard during our work session. The first was an update on the STAR assessment, which, as many of you know, replaced the previous math test at all grade levels for the first time this year. I encourage families to listen to this presentation for answers to any lingering questions you may have about this assessment. During the next presentation, the soft launch of a new process called Resolve CSD. The board was excited to learn about the administrative plans for more timely and thorough responses to issues and concerns from us and the community. As a reminder, Constituent Services, or Resolve CSD, is not a person; we didn't hire someone; it's a process. We want to ensure that all CSD community stakeholders feel seen and heard. I was also pleased to learn about plans underway for a framework for social-emotional learning, or SEL, long overdue. This was followed by an overview of the district's... ...graduate resident will complete during her ten months with CSD. And the final of the presentation was the district's capital plan, which included recommended priorities over the next three years, including facilities, safety, IT, textbooks, and a new early childhood learning center. As I close, the board wants to once again salute the student members of the Beacon Hill Jets on their achievements and all the changes of the year. There are countless amazing things happening around this district. I often almost pause, try to mention them out of fear that I'm going to leave something out. But after the tragedy of last week, for me personally, it was so amazing to see so many smiling faces at the Battle of the Bands at Legacy Park. Congrats to Glenwood, and thank you to DEF for putting on that event last Friday night. From my daughter, hearing about the undefeated middle school girls volleyball team, a sport that's not going to get the attention of our undefeated football team but deserves it, and so many more that we should be celebrating and praising for what they do and represent in our community. The plans for Spirit Week at Beacon Hill and Tally that are impacting my family and my daughter's choice of which hat to wear, being the most important thing in her world right now. There's just so much to celebrate around here that I hope we don't get lost in the many rightful things we have to complain about. I want to remind the public and personally invite you to the board's upcoming Fall Community Meeting on Wednesday, September eighteenth. It'll start at six-thirty PM. The board community meetings provide opportunities for the public to ask questions directly to the board and receive some immediate feedback. We'll also delve more into plans for the new constituent service process, Resolve CSD. We'll provide details on how we develop policies, seek feedback on the policies we should explore, and discuss possible topics for a future parent university, which has been teased a few places over the last few months. That concludes my remarks for this evening. Board members, do any of you... Oh, uh-oh. Do any of you have thoughts to share? Board member Hoops, I hear you too.
Yes, Chair Herndon. If you don't mind, I'd like to take a few minutes to address the community regarding the development of the vacant lot at West Trinity into an early childhood learning center. First, I want to discuss our role as a board, as an administration, and as a school system. Our first, last, and sole focus is on ensuring the highest quality education for the kids in our system. It is not one of our areas of focus. It is our only area of focus, and it will remain so. This is a massive responsibility that every one of us here feel mightily. So the first question we always ask on any topic in front of us is, what is best for kids? Rarely has an answer been so obvious. Early childhood education has been shown in study after study to be one of the single most impactful programs available. From the impact on literacy and lifelong learning, to social and emotional development, to closing or eliminating the achievement gap, early childhood education is one of the biggest bang-for-your-buck programs available in the public sphere. So then the question becomes, why build there? The answer here is simple. Every year, we have children show up in kindergarten dramatically behind their peers because they have not had access to early childhood education. For example, less than twelve percent of the eligible Decatur Housing Authority children attend the current Early Childhood Learning Center. College Heights is simply too far away to reliably access, and the families do not have the funds or resources to afford the other programs distributed throughout the city. Proximity to DHA is a priority when we select a location. Second, the City Schools of Decatur already owns the Trinity Lot. This is a point upon which much of the community is confused. It is not a city-owned property. It is the property of the school system, and we are not in any way tasked, charged, authorized, experienced, or capable of developing and managing a park. That is solely the responsibility of the city. And so, the only way for that to become a park is if we were to turn that over to the city. Now, let me be precise. Turn over that land, which is worth a minimum of six million dollars, to the city for it to be turned into a park. And then, because we would need the land to develop, buy a similarly sized plot of land close to DHA within the city limits to build upon for another minimum of six million dollars, if such a property even exists. So the question is, do we dump an incremental six million or more dollars in taxes on the backs of Decatur taxpayers to establish a park that we are not capable of maintaining to primarily benefit downtown residents, and in doing so relocate the Early Childhood Learning Center to a vastly worse location for the specific kids we are trying to help? I vote no. To be clear, I have seen people suggest marginal sites as alternatives. My question is, if you are not willing to consider that site for a park, why would you offer it as an alternative location for a school to serve underprivileged kids? I have also heard the following. You know I support underprivileged kids, but the entire racial history of U.S. relations is contained within that but. That but is exactly the mechanism by which those children are underprivileged in the first place. If not now, when? If you are not going to support those kids now, when? Thus, this plot of land will be developed into an early childhood learning center. We are working with the city and the community to determine how much of the land can be left undisturbed to function as an adjacent park to the school. But fair warning to this entire community, every decision will be made with an eye towards what serves the children best. I, and I suspect my fellow board members are with me, we are unapologetic about that. As you say in the South, I've said my piece in Canada three. Thank you, Board Chair Herndon, and my fellow board members for the opportunity from the top.
Next, board member Hoops. Hearing none, we will move on to the next item on the agenda. Board, we move to the consent agenda items, which include monthly items such as nutrition, financial, and personnel reports, overnight out-of-state student travel, obflicit comments from the board on each individual item. After the item's been discussed, it'll move to consent. There'll be a motion to accept the consent agenda at the end of the discussion of all items. And agenda item one is school nutrition. Any comments from the board? Hearing none, this item can move to consent. Dr. Whitaker, can we receive the monthly financial report?
Yes, Chair Herndon. Dr. Lolita Broome, Chief Financial Officer, will present the monthly financial report.
Good evening. The July twenty twenty-four financial report and definition of function codes are listed are located in the assembly. The finance department operates based on the district's four strategic accelerators, with a specific focus on accelerating for organizational effectiveness and excellence through financial transactions. July is the first month of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. The board approved a general fund budget of one hundred and five million, seven hundred eleven thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars in June. The district has received nine hundred fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and six dollars in rollover grants from fiscal year twenty-four and new grants for fiscal year twenty-five. The grants are state-awarded grants. State grants are funded or funds allocated from the state for specific purposes as listed in the box to the right titled General Fund Awarded Grants. The grant revenue funds are listed in function thirty-eight hundred of the grants Georgia Department of Education on the General Fund Financial Report. The listed state grants are required to be budgeted in the general fund. The addition of the grants to the general fund increases the general fund budget to one hundred and six million, six hundred and seven thousand, and seven hundred and thirty-six dollars. As of July twenty twenty-four, the district collected twenty-four percent or approximately twenty-five million dollars of the budgeted revenue, which is six percent more than that which was collected this time last year. The majority of July revenue collections were from property taxes. Approximately twenty-four million dollars of the twenty-five million dollars changed from property taxes. Property tax revenues are collected in April and December. The April collections were recognized as current fiscal year revenue in account for the district receiving such a large percentage of budgeted revenue. Forty-one percent of the budgeted property tax revenue is traditionally received within the first month of the fiscal year. Expenditures are normal for this time of the year. The district has expended four percent of the overall budget approximately three million for the month of July, this is sixty-three percent higher than that which was spent in July twenty twenty-three. The majority of these expenditures were for increases in salaries and benefits of twelve-month employees, along with purchases associated with the start of the new school year. Overall, year-to-date, there's a surplus of approximately twenty-one point nine million dollars, due primarily to the large receipt of property tax collected collection posted in July. Last year this time, the surplus was also twenty-one point nine million dollars. The surplus of revenue is normal at this time of the year in account for the healthy fund balance of approximately forty-one million dollars. However, please note that the fund balance will decrease as expenditures increase and revenue begins to decrease. July revenue for capital funds consists of approximately twenty-two thousand dollars from... The receipt of capital proceeds began in August. Expenditures are normal for this time of the year and customarily exceeds revenue. The two hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-six thousand deficit will be covered by the fund balance, which was seven million dollars in July. Fiscal year twenty-five anticipated expenditures for capital, which includes outstanding projects from fiscal year twenty-four, is approximately twelve million dollars. Special revenue funds consist mainly of federal, local, and state grants not budgeted in general funds. We are currently closing out fiscal year twenty-four grants, receiving reimbursement, and preparing for fiscal year twenty-five grants. School nutrition revenue and expenditures are trending within the same range as previous years. During the summer months when school is out, school nutrition traditionally operates at a deficit. school nutrition traditionally operates at a deficit. Receipt of school nutrition revenue from sales and the federal government typically begins in the month of August. The $44,524,000 deficit will be deducted from the fund balance, which is currently $2 million. I will be happy to respond to any questions or clarification.
Thank you, Dr. Broom. Any questions or comments about the financial report?
Can I just ask one question? The page 54 here, it's the FY24-25 where it lists the revenue and expenditures. The 1,000 is instruction.
Is this a general fund?
Capital and debt funds. And then 2,400 is school admin. And so the left column of budgeted is how much is budgeted for this fiscal year coming up? Or?
For the current fiscal year, which started this, in the month of July. Here was.
Anyone else? Hearing none. Thank you, Dr. Broom, for the report. This item can be moved to consent. Consent Agenda Item 3 is the Personnel Report. Any comments from the board? Hearing none, this item can move to consent. Consent Agenda Item 4 is the Overnight Out-of-State Student Travel. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, this item can be moved to consent.
Chair Herndon, may I read the recommendation?
Of course.
I recommend the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education approve the Consent Agenda Items 1 through 4.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 1 through 4?
Move to approve Consent Items 1 through 4.
Thank you, Board Member Oups. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Thank you. Second, any discussion of the items are up for vote? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. My sources tell me that Ms. McCool from Winona Park has shown up for Teacher of the Year recognition. So I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to go back to teacher recognition. Do I have, can I hear a motion to do so?
Uh, so moves.
And do I have a second?
Okay.
All right. Any discussion of the amendment to the agenda to go back to teacher recognition? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I'd like to pass the floor.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I would like to ask our Winona Park Teacher of the Year, Kelly McCool, to please come forward. A little bit about Kelly. With 23 years of dedicated service in education, Kelly is driven by her passion for early childhood education. She eventually transitioned to teaching kindergarten at Glenwood, but is now at Winona Park. Beyond her exceptional work in her classroom, Kelly is known for her commitment to wellness, introducing yoga classes for both students and staff. And Wilson Center staff attend as well. So congratulations on being recognized as Teacher of the Year for Winona Park. Your trusted principal has your plaque for you, but we just wanted to make sure that we honor you and recognize you. So let's give her a hand.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Appreciate that, and flexibility as well. Moving on to policy, Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, thank you, Chair Herndon. I would like to call on Mrs. Amanda Lynch, Chief of Staff. For second read action.
Good evening. Board Chair Herndon, Vice Chair Sultan, and the C members of the board, Student Representative Delena, Dr., and Superintendent Dr. Eva Whitaker. Tonight, we have four policies for second read action. Each of these policies were presented last month for first read in response to changes in the last legislative session. Each of these four policies have been available for public comment through assembly. First, we have Policy G A H R B, Paid Parental Leave. This policy increased the amount of time of paid parental leave from 120 to 240 hours, again in response to legislation. We did receive a public comment. It requested an increase to the 240 hours. I'm asking for more. However, the 240 hours is determined at the state level and not the local level. Therefore, we have not made any additional changes to the version that was presented last month and available for public comment. May I read the recommendation?
Yes, please.
I recommend the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education approve Policy G A H R B, Paid Parental Leave, for action.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation, approve Policy G A H R B, Paid Parental Leave, for action? Board Member Oups, do I have a second?
Okay.
Vice Chair Sultan, second motion, any discussion? I will only throw out, I really like the public comment here. I think it's a great area where, as a board, I would like to see the parental leave increased. But, you know, as the book showed us, we are dealing with the state that sets laws and all that sort of stuff. But it was a good, it was a good example that people do make public comment, which I love.
Is that something that we want to potentially direct our libyists or individuals working on our behalf of the state to make some requests about?
That's a great use of our resources. Is our little Decatur system going to cost the state billions of dollars? And I love it. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next, we have Policy E D C, Transportation Safety. We did not receive any public comments on this policy, and no changes have been made to the version presented last month or available for public comment. May I read the recommendation?
Yes, please.
I recommend the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education approve Policy E D C, Transportation Safety, for action.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation, to approve Policy E D C, Transportation Safety, for action? Thank you, Board Member Oups. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Board Member Dr. Sultan. Second motion, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Right, third, we have Policy G C R A 1, Drug Screening of Bus Drivers. Again, we did not receive any public comments on this policy, and no changes have been made to the version presented last month and that was available for public comment. May I read the recommendation?
Yes, please.
I recommend the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education approve Policy G C R A 1, Drug Screening of Bus Drivers, for action.
Excellent. Do I have a motion to approve, recommendation to approve Policy G C R A 1, Drug Screening of Bus Drivers, for action? Board Member Oups, thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Board Member Amerson. Second motion, any discussion of this policy? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And last, we have Policy J G C D, Medication. We did not receive any public comments on this policy, and no changes have been made to the version presented last month and available for public comment through assembly. May I read the recommendation?
Yes, please.
I recommend the City Schools of Decatur Board of Education approve Policy J G C D, Medication, for action.
Excellent. Do I have a motion to approve, recommendation to approve Policy J G C D, Medication, for action? Board Member Oups, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Sultan. Second motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
This motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mrs. Lynch, for keeping us on this policy train. Now it is time to move to public comments portion of our meeting.
And we do not have anyone signed up at this time. And as you know, it has been advertised at 6:30, but we do not have anyone signed up at this.
For policy norms, we will wait for 17 year to decide if they want to public comment or maybe someone will log on online. So I will adjourn for a pause for the next 15 or so minutes. Thanks. The following information is included in the board policy manual. Members of the public also acknowledge this information when they sign up to speak. This is a reminder for all speakers and members of the audience, the opportunity to address the board during public comment is limited to parents, students, residents, employees, businesses, and organizations. Persons wishing to address the board during public comment must sign in before the period begins and in doing so are asked to state their connection to CSD and/or City Decatur. So allow time for boards of other business. Public comment will be limited to 20 speakers. The time limit was three minutes. You cannot yield the floor. Speakers should be courteous and professional. They are not to list complaints about personnel or individuals. The board strictly prohibits abusive language, threats, comments, cheers, appalls, or shouts on the floor. Disruptive persons will be asked to leave the meeting room. The chair may terminate public comments that are profane, vulgar, defamatory, or disruptive. Any speaker's comments verge in the areas of hate speech or defamation. I will ask, they may not address confidential student or personnel matters, but should submit such concerns to the superintendent in writing. Members of the board will not address persons presenting a public comment or speak to the substance made during public comment. Instead, a member of the admin team will follow up the person speaking at the board meeting. Dr. Whitaker, do we have someone signed up to be our first speaker?
Yes, we do. We have Mr. Gregory White.
Good evening, Mr. White. How are you?
Good evening, school board members. I just want to say thank you. I'm Greg White, retired Decatur employee. Just want to come in the spirit of collaboration of reference to the school property. I want to say, first of all, finish that point as an employee who always had a wonderful worker relationship. And I talk about it. That's how I would like to see it. Just want to bring to your attention this history, where we sit, and you know this Beacon Hill historic African-American community. A lot of people, one of the big events that we have is called Decatur Day, month of the year. Third year has been wonderful. You all have been wonderful. That is used to property. Used to be in McQuarrie was too small, hard to direct traffic all day. So now we moved it over here. It's been wonderful. But just trying to make sure people don't get all emotional. Just because I know, as I heard, say at the board, we know your project. I know your project. So understand that piece of it. But I'll just ask and ask to make sure that what can you include some of those forces in the process? And whatever you design, what could it be so we could actually see it as a place for gathering? Because a lot of people that come to Decatur Day, they're actually parents, and parents, 30, 40 generations actually lived on that property. So I would just like to say it was sitting. We always think about it, we talk about it. But I like what is always be about it. So part of it, I'm involved with the event. This is year 35 of the event. And I told someone, from my perspective, was to bring the event forward. Might have saw the Decatur, so people are aware of the event. Event was the same time that Book Fest was going on. So people didn't understand the history, but I would give you a simple idea of this type of people come back. At 1961, Miss Trinity High was here this late day. You had the 1963 Valentine's Day. You have players from 1965 Trinity High School traveling across the nation that show up. So you got people coming all walks of life, come back and celebrate. So I was just saying, we moving forward. Team, they just think about what we designed. Go to school first, but how could a property be? So we've got some green space, trees. How we continue to have it? As you see in Decatur, that's porch beds. It all, when you're in Decatur, the event, school system, the long-term event. I can tell you Run with the Dog. I've been in the street with Run with the Dog. So I see all the events. To me, that's always the way. But just trying to make sure people don't get so emotional. But let's be thankful for the school system. I thank, thank you for what you do. Pray for you for what you do. Because I know it's not easy trying to, school system. Thank you for the collaboration.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. White. I believe that's it?
Yes.
All right. I'd like to thank all the speakers for taking time to be here tonight. And board members, please keep in mind it's important for us to hear the concerns from our community. And we take all of the comments into consideration as we move forward and make plans. Future dates, next Wednesday, September 18th, we will have our first community meeting of the 2024-25 school year at Oakhurst Elementary School from 6:30 to 8:00. Topics on the agenda are Policy 101, Parent University, and Resolve CSD. Our next board meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 8th, right here at the Wilson Center. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 6:35 PM. Thank you.